Ninth work session of the Stafford County School Board. I was going to ask everybody to go around and just introduce to your attendance that way. Ms. Hollerback, you want to start us off?
Irene Hollerback. Quiet this track. Oh, it's not, the mic's not off.
Tricia Healy, Rock Hill.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths-Whitewater.
Sarah Chase, Falmouth.
Pamela Young, D. Garrisonville District.
Susan Randall, George Washington District.
All right, all board members are in attendance tonight at North Stafford High School. We have Dr. Kizner here as well. Do I have a motion to approve the work session agenda?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we are going back to, I'm sure, a topic that we seem to be meeting on a lot is our school recovery plans. Going to, at this time, turn it over to Dr. Kizner for his presentation.
I'm going to tell a story first, if you give me that liberty, because you guys know you deserve a story.
How long is the story?
So, last week Lori and I went hiking in the Kanane Valley. Beautiful, if you haven't been there, three hours. And we started and we followed the purple trail. And we loved the purple trail. And all of a sudden, somebody said, you should go the blue trail. So, we said, okay, what the heck, we'll go to blue trail. And then we followed the blue trail. And then we realized it was getting a little dark. And I said, how do you get back on the purple trail? And some gentleman, believe it or not, we met and said, you need to, you'll go about another 200 yards. You'll see the yellow trail. You will find the purple trail when you go there. Well, we called the park ranger and he helped us to get down. So, the point being is, we are navigating a lot of trails. And when you think you're getting there, you're going to get more advice and then you're going to go another way. So, and this really is a true story. So, what I want to share with you is, again, oops. I don't know, it worked on the test, Mike, is it?
Oh, boy.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is a quote, "When you aim for perfection, you discover it's a moving target." All right, and so, I'd be the first one to say, and I, that we're not going to find perfection. There's going to be a lot of areas that I think we will all agree, we wish we could do it differently. But what I will offer you is, with the many parameters that are in front of us, locally, statewide, I think we are doing our best to navigate. And I bring that up is because you've received emails, I'm receiving emails, and it's not unusual for people to compare us to another community. And if a community is doing great, I say, go for it, then I want to see what they're doing. But I also know, and they know, that their community has some, some factors that we may not have. It could be more funds, it could be a different way they do their buses, it could be whatever. So, so this is a Stafford plan. I would also tell you, as you've been reading your V S B A briefings and whatever newspapers you read, there isn't a lot of difference throughout Virginia, because the parameters are pretty much the same for all of us. But anyway, I talked to Ms. Hazard today, and, and I want to give her this shout out, because we do have an amazing team. And I know some of you have been meeting with different individuals of the team. And obviously, I'm not going to mention all the people, but we have a very collaborative group that meets constantly. And again, it is, if we would borrow a educational curriculum term, it's multi and interdisciplinary team. And one impacts all of it. So, I want to thank, and many of them are listening and maybe will participate based on some of your questions. So, anyway, I do want to thank them. All right, so, ongoing planning priorities. And I want to emphasize the word ongoing, because whenever we start school, the 17th, we will always be amending based on the information that's in front of us, okay? But we have communication with staff and parents. In your packet, you don't have to take it out, but tomorrow, we're going to put live our first Q and A, or frequently asked questions, because with all the emails that we're getting, well, I tried my best, I think we all have tried our best, to respond, but there's a lot of questions that are very similar. So, we, it's much easier just to send people the link, and they may even see some answers to questions that they've been thinking or didn't think of. So, our communication department has taken responsibility of compiling it. And tomorrow, in the Friday letter that parents and staff will get, we will link it separately, but we may eventually merge it. H R is doing one for our staff, a Q and A one, okay? And then you also know, we've had town hall meetings, we'll have another one Monday night. Again, surveys, emails, Zoom chat, phone calls, et cetera. All right, so instructional curriculum models, obviously, we, we often remind ourselves, why are we doing this? Because we have children, okay? And children, obviously, we want them to learn. Equity focus, social emotional focus, a lot of work on classroom and building layouts. And I'll go over some of these in great, not all of them, but some of these in much more detail. Mitigation strategies, COVID-19 positive test response protocols, bus routing, staffing priorities. So, staffing priorities, again, once we get information from our families. And just so you know, we've received so far about 17,000. So, you know, that's not bad. We'll do a couple more reminders, and I think I already shared with you, and I'll just mention it now. We're going, and I'll mention it later, we're going to extend it to a week from Friday. So, the principals now are working, well, Monday, they'll get a list of people that haven't returned it, and then they'll start making those personal contacts and so on. And then, you know, we're putting a lot of paper copies together for families that we believe maybe don't have access to it. Bus routing, which, again, there's so many people to thank, but our dispatchers, and they've been working endlessly. Staffing priorities and personnel needs, including childcare, identifying his health risk employees and students, technology delivery and effectiveness, meal distribution, V H S L activities, budgeting to support priorities and others. So, all these things are taking place. I just want to remind you, the June 15th meeting that we had at the North Stafford High School Library, like we're meeting right now, we went over three pages of priorities, but I just want to restate one of the pages, okay? And this is, that pre-K and elementary students will receive transportation and building-based instructional priority. Students with special learning needs will receive transportation and building-based instructional priority. Students without internet access will be a priority. Remote learning will be provided to support social distancing restrictions when necessary and reasonable. Students with unique health needs and other circumstances, we've expanded that now from other to as a full option, will be provided remote learning option, potentially limiting the number of classes at the middle and high school level. Let me just give you an example of that. We went from, some of our high schools were moving towards a, in Harris, in Harris, I haven't said that in a long time. In Harris, where we were called an A B schedule, here, we call it an X Y schedule. But we're moving to a four by four schedule with some exceptions, like A P classes, and classes that lend itself more for the, every other day. Reducing the usage of the cafeteria, gymnasium, and other communal areas, support social distancing, and limiting mixing between groups whenever possible. That one is more challenging than I think people might recognize. I won't go over all the phase guidance, but there's been a lot of discussions of what has changed. And I already sent you the document, and again, this is right off the D O E website, the Virginia Department of Education website. So, what they did was, they included the World Health Organization and the American Academy of Pediatrics in there, and with their recommendations. And they also, I've been saying the executive order, but now we know what the executive order is. So, it's 250 individuals, continued limitations on school activities. And the V S H L, I think next, yeah, next week, I believe they have their executive session. It's executive committee meeting, so we should learn more about what might be, being of, what might, what might the future look there? And further clarification about face coverings and physical distancing. Again, I will just need to tell you that the Department of Education is still stating, and the document, I'm taking the words off them, that they are still emphasizing six feet when possible is still recommended. The American Academy of Pediatrics and World Health Organization speak more about three feet. The American Academy of Pediatrics does say three feet with masks, okay? Now, I will tell you, you knew, you knew this already, we already were doing three feet in the area that was going to restrict us the most, transportation. So, we already made that decision, and that was great support with our local health director from the Raffahannock Area Health Department. So, I know you've gotten some emails saying, we, my point really being is, even if we want to make the classrooms closer, which I would not recommend at all, but if we wanted to, we would have to, like, increase our bus routing by so much more, because we're basically following the three feet rule right now. All right, so some of the mitigation strategies, and again, Colette and her team, this is often updated as new information is provided. So, we're going with health screenings, and health screenings right now are, for those of you who went to graduation, you're familiar with it, it's a, it's pretty much asking people, following questions, and then, you know, I guess in many ways, it's an honor system. Temperature checks, so we are, again, we're working out the details. Different school systems are looking at different ways. Some are going to ask families to do it at home, some are doing it at the bus area, some are doing it with some apps, I guess. But we are, we purchased 400 of those non-invasive thermometers that you probably see you just doing in a forehead and you get it. Now, again, the temperature check is just a temperature check, you have to remember that. So, if you have a temperature, even if it has nothing to do with COVID-19, we need to know that, because, you know, we, we need to get you home if you're sick. And that's going to be one of our greatest challenges, is, you know, there's a lot of other illnesses that take place, especially as we get into flu season and allergy season. So, you know, you know, every time a kid sneezes or sniffles, we can't say, oh, my God, kid's got COVID-19. You know, he may just have an allergy. All right, face coverings, so this is one thing I would hope that the board could, if you could do it tonight, that would be very helpful. Face coverings for student and staff, take action. Encourage families to make appointments for school visits and limit visits, visitors. Cloth face covers for bus drivers and, and face shields. And Barry's working his folks, we're not going to do anything that's going to distract the driver from driving, okay? So, I know when we did the town hall and Barry was there, he was getting texts from some of his drivers. How am I going to do this? I can't have a face mask while I'm driving, I won't be able to see. And so, you know, this is on and off bus stops, you do have kids going back and forth. Diligent cleaning with electrostatic disinfecting, and each school has been provided three portable air cleaners to be used in the main office and clinics, okay? That's not all the things we're doing, but this is an added thing that I just want to mention, the three portable air cleaners to be used. All mechanical systems will be consistently evaluated for proper airflow, and air filters will be changed frequently, which is basically three or four times during the course of the year. There's, again, John Anderson is on this call, if you have specific questions about that. But it's not, you got to have a level of airflow, okay? All right, again, continuous cleaning valve building of buses, Plexiglas shields in front office and other high-risk areas. If you're interested in seeing it, we have it up at Melch, what do we call Melchers now? Not Southern Star, what is it? Okay, Rising Star. We got Northern Star and Rising Star, okay? Because they actually, we have a program that started there, okay? So, so there's, if you want to see it. Face shields for some staff, for some staff, we know, social distancing is going to be challenging based on their assignment and the kids that they're working with. Hand hygiene and personal care will be constantly reinforced. Curriculum changes, so I've, you know, an example would be chorus singing. You know, we, you don't, you don't want singing, I mean, you do, you just don't want it during this time, you know, because, but they have to make some curriculum changes. Materials like sports equipment, kids sharing, you know, crayons and things like that. You want as much as possible limited, you want to limit it, but you don't want to go crazy, okay? If a little five-year-old, six-year-old gives a kid a crayon, you know, we're not going to grab a cigarette, you know? But, but we're going to, you know, you know, we taught you for many years that sharing is important. Now, we're telling you, sharing is not good, you know? So, a lot of kids are going to be in therapy after this. Stay home is sick. I mean, that's, this shouldn't really be a COVID-19 thing, but if you're sick, please stay home, and you have to stay home. And I get it, I was a parent of four kids. I'm not going to say there hasn't been a day where maybe I knew the kid was not feeling that well, but Lori and I had to go to work and were thinking, I, you know, go, just try, we'll give you enough Tylenol early in the morning. By the time it wears off, the day will be over. So, but now you really need to stay home, you always had to stay home, you said. And again, Dr. Stern just told Colette again, that he's, he's going to do town hall, and where he's also, as part of our, when our staff return, he's willing to meet with our staff to go over COVID-19 issues. Okay, responding to cases. So, again, it's not as simple as every time you respond the same way. But one thing that we know, protocol for care suspected COVID-19 cases in students and staff during the school day. We already talked about it, we established clinical isolation rooms to separate six students. Again, the objective is to isolate them and then get them home, okay? Control clinic traffic to prevent potential exposures. So, our staff have been working on this. Protocol for return to school, work post-positive COVID-19, school or work. Again, the health department is always notified when we have suspect or aware of a positive case, okay? And then they work with us to give us some direction on how we should handle it. So, I was on a conference call a couple weeks ago, again, with our regional school systems, and, and the health department gave a very honest answer. The answer is, it depends on the situation, okay? There's not one response. But what we do know, that children and/or staff, and staff, that have had continuous exposure of 15 minutes with less than six feet social distancing, that is truly, you know, a high-risk situation. So, we report to V D H, we, administration, maintenance, families that are impacted. And again, there's always a public interest, but we have to recognize there's also a privacy requirement. So, if, when we inform, and let me just turn to this, when we inform a class or a school or a school system that we have to shut down, or, you know, or whatever we have to inform, I know you already know this, I'm speaking to the public, we have a legal obligation for privacy not to identify the person that is infected. So, a good question often asked is, well, what is, how's the school system going to respond? So, again, some of the things that I will look at with our team is, the severity and the length of the closure will drive the academic model. So, some of the responses is a three, clean, at least for three hours, because of the way the droplets are. So, if we know if it's a one-day shutdown of a class or a school, we would respond differently. If we know we have a chronic situation at a school, or the Virginia Department of Health is telling us, you have to do an extended closing. Now, you have to also remember, and I'll just use this as an example, because we're at North Stafford High School Library, that's why I'm using that as an example. If North Stafford High School has to be closed, suddenly, because that's what's going to happen, it's going to be a sudden close. Well, many of our employees here may have children, or many of our employees in other schools may have children. Well, that's a bad example, because high school, let's, let's use a better example, okay? Because those high school kids could be by themselves, you know? Let's say it's Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School, okay? So, Kate Waller Barrett, we have to close. Mom and dad work at North Stafford High School. You know, it's, it's not as simple, how do I get childcare right away? So, there's a lot of things that we have to, to, to navigate when we close school. Face-to-face instruction will transition to a virtual learning model when it's determined that this is the best course of action due to, to, due to an expected long-term instructional disruption. So, again, I don't need to mention the states, you've watched the news, you read the newspapers. Some places that are now changing their opening, not for school, because schools haven't opened yet, but even universities, some of the universities now are altering. So, again, let's hope for the best, but I'm also have to plan for the worst. So, if there is a, if we go back to phase two, if we go back to phase one, or if we have a local outbreak, okay? We have to be prepared. Now, I will say one thing, I'm going to say it later, but I'm going to say it now. As an educator, and I know some of you, we're all educators, that's why you took this position that you're in. If you had a child in September, October, that did not do well on a test or misbehaved, I know none of us would judge them for the rest of the year based on that, okay? We would help them from that experience. So, I'd be the first one to say, along with hopefully every other superintendent, but I don't really care about them, I just care about Stafford, that our spring virtual learning was not a rewarding experience for many people. I'm not going to say all, but for many people. So, we have learned from that, and that will be improved upon, I know. And one of the greatest improvements, again, will be that for those who are selecting the hybrid, they will have their child's teacher at least twice a week, okay? Which is a huge advantage, and you'll see some other things. Again, if we're closing, if you're on the, if you're on the 100% virtual, you know, there's probably minimal impact, if any impact at all. So, other considerations may include an adjustment of the school calendar, okay? Because again, as much as I'm saying, I know we're improving our virtual learning, I'm also going to say, you cannot replace the face-to-face with virtual learning. I just really believe that from, from my readings and my experiences. And so, there might be some children that we may need to think about Saturdays coming in. We may need to adjust the calendar and say, if we're going to be off for five days, you know, we may just need to extend five days. And I understand that we don't know what it might mean a month from now, we may still have the problem. But I don't want it just to be this, we close and go to virtual, without looking, is there some other options that we should consider, okay? All right, so, sudden closing of schools in March 2020, mandated school divisions to deploy quickly a continuity of learning plan that did not require attendance or new learning. I'm going to talk about attendance in a minute. So, again, if it gives you, if, I don't like to use the word misery, because many of our teachers, I believe, did a very good job on remote learning. So, I don't want to put everything in one category, and fairness for those who maybe did not do as well, I believe, and I'll take full responsibility for it, is that they were not given enough guidance and direction on how to do this. So, I'm not here to place blame, I'm here just to make improvements. But I will tell you, if misery is like in company, I had a meeting today with 83 school system superintendents that we discussed their plans to open. And then we broke into 10 different rooms of eight people each. And honestly, pretty much everybody's doing the same thing with a little variation. Some, you know, it seems like two days on, two days off, with one day of cleaning or specialized instruction seems to be. Now, some school systems, I will tell you, I share this with you already, I'm not recommending this, but some school systems are putting a lot more emphasis on the elementary, you know, for like four days a week, and may, some are even having high school complete remote. I'm not recommending that. And, and middle school, maybe one day a week, okay? So, and, and you'll see why I, why I think some people are doing that. All right, Stafford school reopening plan for the fall has three foundational components regarding instructional delivery, monitoring student progress, assessing student achievement, and ensuring student and staff engagement. And again, we could go into that in greater detail. Require, a hybrid and 100% virtual learning models requires instructors to leverage both in-person and online learning strategies, and transparently to students, I don't know, then come out, parents and our community. So, I will say that one of the things that we know we need to do is, let me make sure it's not on the other slide first. Well, I'll just say it, and it may be later anyway. In the beginning, we're going to depend on some online learning curriculums that have been approved by the Department of Education. It will help our staff better prepare, understand, and then we will migrate to creating our own models. And enables our school division to continue to meet federal and state accreditation accountability measures such as student growth and attendance, which we still have to do. Commonalities to both models would be highly qualified, Virginia State certified instructors. So, one program is what's called K-12, Inc., that's geared towards more of your K-5 children. It could be a teacher in another community, working with our students in Stafford, okay? Which is K-12, Inc., if you're familiar with them, they're in many, many school divisions. New learning that ensures alignment with the Virginia standards of learning, leveraging technology to monitor student and staff engagement and performance, and embedded planning and professional learning for staff and district and structural leadership. So, that's a real important part, which has started months ago. We've had a lot of online professional development, I already shared with you, our partnership with Mary Washington, but by no means that's the only thing. Matter of fact, I'm now going through training, they're offering training, I'm taking advantage of it. I'm a little, I'm somewhat familiar with Canvas through teaching at JMU, but a lot of school systems are going to Canvas platform, and so they're offering free trainings to superintendents, and I signed up, I had my first lesson today. I did pretty well. Just ask me. I was doing my own progress monitoring. I didn't give up, that's, that's how I measure, I did pretty well. All right, so, oh, yeah, I did mention it, okay? Adoption pedagogical practices based on elementary, middle, and high school students. Implementing the Department of Ed approved online instruction, which I just mentioned. Ed annuity would be more at the middle and high school level. We already have licenses, license with Ed annuity. All right, so attendance will be taken, but I have to tell you, emails that I'm getting from parents, I got one today from Garrisonville Elementary School, a very nice parent, and then, they're all nice, but Carrie followed up with a phone call to the parent. So, this was their, their question to me. During their day, they're going to be, the days their kids are not in school, they're going to be in a daycare center that has already told the parents, we are not going to have internet access for, for online learning, okay? And this parent was concerned that if we're going to take attendance on those days, well, my kid is going to be at this childcare. So, I responded to the parents, and I said, don't worry, no, we're going to work with you. She said, when we get, my husband and I get home, you know, we will do the work with my child. But, and I said, no, we're, we're going to be flexible, you know, I, that's, I guess I'm just using that as a very recent example. And then I sent it to Carrie, just so she could follow up with the parent. And, and she told me late this afternoon that the parent was very appreciative, it gave them ease. So, attendance is an expectation, but we'll also have to be very pragmatic as we're looking to expand and work with outside providers for childcare. And even, you know, again, this is way before they had computers, or computers that you would have at home. But for many years, my grandparents took care of me when my mother and father went to work, when I came home from school. You know, if you're at grandma's house, she's not doing the online work, I shouldn't say all grand, my grandmother wasn't doing it, okay? So, we just have to be realistic. Our teachers will provide feedback and, when appropriate, grades, okay? And, you know, as you get older, I see grades being obviously much more part of, the point being is, there's progress monitoring, okay? There is going to be an expectation that the staff and students are understanding how their performance is, is helping the student improve. Virtual learning options will align with identified student learning needs. Again, everything that we're talking about has to be offered for all children, okay? Not just a select group of children. Multimodal delivery model, okay? You know, some, like, one thing I, again, I, you know, I hope this parent is listening, because I'm using her as an example a lot, but like she said, even if you gave packages, they, the childcare center said, they would do packages in the school, okay? And again, that would be something that Garrisonville Elementary School would probably work on. I think that's, you know, there's, there's a point where central office needs to step back a little bit, set some parameters, but the schools have to do the implementation. So, when this mother mentioned that... So when this mother mentioned that, you know, that would be something that I could see for some families being very appropriate. And then we've talked about they're developing the virtual learning rules of, of engagement, and we already are pretty much at the point where we could very soon roll out, obviously, we still got a couple more weeks, parent support and help desk. All right, so now let me just get into things that you already saw, but I did get a question from Ms. Hollaback that I want to at least, because I know you've gotten some emails and feedback about why did we shift elementary and high school, and I just wanna go over that one other time, an additional time. Okay, so before I get there though, so we, again, very much want option A, and although I'm gonna put back option B on the, on the screen, and again, I think you're aware of it now, is Tuesday and Wednesday for a group of children face-to-face or learning at school, Thursday and Friday for another group. Monday, it would give options for students to get some more targeted support, and teachers to work on the remote learning part when the kids are not in school. Also, please recognize that there could be some children that could actually be in school five days a week, okay? There are some children that we could identify through the IEP process or other procedures that, based on their needs, that it'll be more than two days up to five days, let me maybe word it that way. B, as you know, is, I'll just word it this way, out of a 10-day week, three, five days they'll be in school, okay? And again, the downside to this one is, it basically gives no time for people to plan for virtual learning, and it really does limit our cleaning opportunities. And C is, again, it's, it's an old slide, I, I would, I, I'll remove other unique circumstances. C is a full opportunity for our families, which is 100% virtual. All right, so let me talk about why elementary first. So this is a quote, right out of the state Return to School Task Force, and if you don't mind, I'll just read it real quickly. Schools should be taking a proactive approach to identify and prioritize acceleration needs for learning due to the COVID-19 school closure. And please, that's very important. The change that we put forward is a COVID-19 change. The school board, we understand, has the responsibility of, of determining the start of the school schedules. Effective schools will support, effective schools will support their stakeholders as they work together to navigate new territories, formats, and systems of learning to provide students with a meaningful education that prepares them for a successful future. In this, schools must adjust supports to meet the needs of identified groups of vulnerable learners focusing on equity and quality over quantity and a status quo prior to school closures. Recognizing that traditional bell-to-bell teaching is no longer feasible in distance learning environments that may extend into the fall. Schools need to maximize contact, communication, instruction in a way that does, does what is best for students. And then, the very first group of vulnerable learners listed in the guidance is early learners. And this may be the reason, and, and so this is just editorial, why a lot of school systems, and I understand it, I mean, I, I will tell you, I, I don't, I, I don't look at those school systems that are focusing more on the elementary as doing anything wrong. It's a choice that their, that their community has made. This may be reason some Virginia school systems are only focusing on elementary schools, students for face-to-face instruction. While we've developed a plan to ensure a face-to-face option for all students at Stafford, the state, and I, and I wouldn't even use the word state, the, the state or local clearly articulates the needs, the need for us to give special attention priority to groups who have been affected most by the impact of COVID-19. And so virtual learning is a challenge for younger children. It, it just is. But what are the intended outcomes of adjusting this current bus schedule? So again, we have increased greatly the number of routes. And prioritization, prioritization of safe, timely delivery, departure arrival time home for our youngest, most vulnerable students will also account for the majority of our students requiring bus transportation. So simply, in the morning, before our buses start, any other route, we wanted them to pick up the elementary children. And we wanted to pick up the elementary children because not doing that, and we run this problem right now with elementary. How many times have we heard from elementary folks that they're staying very late after school, waiting for a bus to come? And again, I'm not blaming anyone, but the buses, every shift run into a potential delay. And Stafford, as you know, is not a place where there's shy, a shortage of delays, okay? So here in the morning, all the buses would be ready to go and pick up elementary students, knowing that they're gonna have to go back multiple times anyway. So one of the things, you know, I, I will tell you right now, that is a longer-term conversation. When you see the transportation study, they're already telling us that we need to have staggered schedules. And if you look at Fairfax and other places, Loudoun, you can just pick your larger school system, you're gonna see staggered schedules already in, in their, in their plans. Maximizing instructional hours for those who've impacted the most. So the theory is, and the belief is, that if the kids are picked up first, they get to school first, we limit the chances that their five hours of instruction will be reduced because of being on the bus. And then we also, we wanna give parents consistency, because they'll know that the bus, you know, is coming at a certain time, because, you know, that would be their first, it would be no reason for a bus to come late unless a bus breaks down or we have a shortage of a driver, okay? Offer, offer instruction during the hours that young children learn best. Allow elementary teachers additional planning time each day after students have departed to ensure high-quality instruction to address the diverse need of young learners in a hybrid delivery model. I will also tell you another thing, I thought I put it up there, but I didn't. Another concern that I have, which I think, you know, we all talk a lot about safety, you know, I don't want children waiting, young children, I don't want any kid, but I don't want young children waiting at bus stops when we depend on elementary being last, and they'll be coming around 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning. You know, there's a potential that their parents have to go. And, and so, and then I will say, once I saw this time, I, I didn't feel like I needed to ask for a lot more information. We already have kids right now that get picked up at 5:45 in the morning. And for the high school to go first, remember, they, even they have to do multiple routes. 5:15 would probably be the prime for the first kid to be picked up. So that is really the honest answer, is to give elementary kids a clear route to school, reducing any obstacles that could cause delays. And if any group of children could stay later and self-manage themselves better, it would be high school students, and this is not the reason, but I was just curious, which I think is a conversation down the road. I did go on the American Academy of Pediatrics, because they've been quoted a lot, to see what they said about adolescent starting times for school. And you get a 2014 study, if you're disinterested. They felt no high school kid should be in school before 8:30. Just a side note. And again, I, I, I'm not gonna say that's the reason, but I think it's a reason to have a conversation down the road. So I don't know, Irene, if this answers your question, but it maybe gives some talking points. The main things, again, is to protect the instructional time, try not to have kids by the bus stop by themselves, and, and also give out teachers who, right now, elementary teachers for years have been the ones that had to stay late, and to give them more time to plan after school, where the high school teachers could plan before school, okay? So I, I appreciate the question, and I understand this is a, this is a sudden change, but again, the driver was instruction, okay? And I always start, I'm not gonna go back, but I always start saying, this is a COVID-19 plan, okay? This is not, you guys could decide not to ever change it, or you could decide you wanna visit the high school model another time, okay? All right, so getting feedback, we did make some adjustments. So student arrival, again, shift one, shift two, and I'm gonna present you shift one, shift two. You'll be the first ones to see shift one, shift two, okay? And let me just tell you how that works also. The early shifts, transportation wants to go on the outliers of our community, okay? Down, oh, what's that thing, down, Marble Point, the Fox Gear Line on 17. You, you know your neighborhoods, okay? So you're gonna see, those are the schools, in most cases, that are gonna be in shift one, okay? Because we want them, so, and then they, when they drop the kids off, they'll be more in the center of town, okay? So here it is. I don't know, I had nothing to do with it, I just transportation said, this is it? I said, okay, you guys, this is your work, okay? So, but I want to give you the reason behind it. They're going to the outskirts, and the schools that have, what? Hampton, they've got kids all the way in far, far reaches of Quayle Harbor, yeah. I mean, it may not be 100% perfect on the outskirts, but, yeah. All right, middle school, again, this is nothing new. We didn't change anything since our meeting a few weeks ago. Anyway, I, I will say, I, I need to say, so a lot of our transportation staff are, well, I shouldn't say a lot, we have transportation staff that might be higher risk for health conditions. This is what I want you to be aware of. Second, you know, we always have a shortage of drivers. We have had recently some drivers who have decided to take another physician or resign. And on top of that, the DMV has been closed a very long time. This is not unique to Stafford. So getting the CDL license and getting renewal is a huge backup. So I will just share with you, even if today we could snap our fingers, we could go right back to the way it was before March 11th, we, we, I don't wanna speak for Barry, because, you know, but I will speak for him. And he used this word, he said, boss, I am very nervous. And, and I understand it, and, and I, and I, and his folks, I've really got to know a lot better the last couple of weeks, the ones that are doing the routing, they are really good people. They are committed, and they are flexible. But we, you know, drivers obviously is a huge part of our system. So let's, we're, we're doing what we could do to get more drivers, and we're gonna honestly, we're gonna recognize those that are concerned about health. High school, again, so the only thing I, all right, well, this is the problem when you have times, like dismissal times, because if it's 4:6, 4:46, then all of a sudden, you get emails, you're late. And I did ask Barry, you know, you know, before we officially, officially put the time, I mean, the, the instruction times will remain the same, is to really, and that's one of the reasons why we need that information from parents. Because if we're finding that we're gonna have to do more routes or less routes, then maybe, you know, we could tweak some of these times. But I'd rather tell folks it could be 4:15 to 4, to 5 o'clock than, than 4:15 to 4:45, if we know buses are gonna be coming at 5 o'clock. Because I think people adapt better when they know what the expectation is, okay? All right, so this is again what you saw. Let me just address another thing that you've gotten. Again, I, I don't know if what you're seeing, I know a lot of times we're on the same emails, I know a lot of times we're not on the same emails. So I have seen a shift of, of, of how people are asking questions. So I do wanna just at least explain why, and again, I've asked today, and I did not find a, a school system that's not using the alphabet as a way of dividing. And, and the reason, the main reason is our commitment to keep families together, okay? And it also allows us to manage our student loads, either on the bus, because I have had parents say, and again, there's not a comment a parent asked that I think is, you know, a, a nutty comment. Every comment is very true to that parent. But a, a comment you may have seen is, my son or daughter has really good friends, and my last name is Burns, and their best friend's last name is Williams, and I anticipate that Burns and Williams will not be the same. So can you do it by neighborhood, or can you do it? And the answer is, you know, your child seems like a great child, and they will make friends with the Carters, okay? So something like that. And then the other thing is, there is an equity issue, okay? If we do all by neighborhoods, let's not kid ourselves. There's a reason why we have some Title I schools, and we have some free and reduced lunch schools and others. So, you know, that's, that's an issue. So this is the way that makes the most sense on multiple levels. And again, I haven't really seen a lot of these, but I do know there are some of these out there. All right, so as I already mentioned, yeah, so some people felt like, I shouldn't have used the word survey, and, and, you know, you know, I, I used it, I'd look at it as a, we're gaining, gathering information from you. But on the Google form, we did call supplemental registration. So, so I'm using the supplemental registration form. So I do believe as we keep adding more information, and we're not gonna have all the information, because a lot of the information is gonna be designed when the teachers get back, okay? You know, a lot of the instructional, we, we want the teachers to be very much engaged in the work in which we're asking them to teach. And based on the calendars, our teachers are not coming back, you know, most of them, until August 3rd. But anyway, the bus ridership commitment, the 17th, the remote-only learning commitment, the 17th. And now, I, if you really read the document that we sent out, there are ways of, you know, if, if somebody made a commitment and this experience is horrendous, we're not gonna say, well, you made a commitment, you're stuck in it for five months. We're not doing anything like that. But again, for purposes of managing our class sizes and bus sizes, we have to have transition. And if it's a child with an IEP or some special programming, we have to also manage that. So I'm not gonna say it's gonna change overnight, but I'm surely don't want your school board members to think for any, any reason, we're gonna hold somebody to, you made the commitment, you're stuck now until December or whenever the semester ends. We're gonna work with families, and, and it may go the other way. I, I mean, I hope, again, I'm wrong, but I'm not sure if I'm wrong on this, or going to be wrong. If we have a positive case in a school, and we have more than a couple of positive cases, I could potentially see more families seeking the remote, 100% virtual. I, I think, I don't know what your emails are share, are saying, but I'm just seeing more people, as we get closer to the opening of school, a little bit more anxious about their, their, the health of, of their children, the health of their family members. So I, childcare, we did get good information from the YMCA perspective. They could take children up to age 12. So first, we were saying K-5, so we could look, a lot of sixth graders, and maybe some early seventh graders, younger seventh graders could be age 12. Their license will allow them to do that. And actually, you know, that's one of the great things about people asking questions. So we, again, I, I keep saying Garrisonville Elementary School, but a parent contacted me, who also is a teacher in our school, employee of our school, who has a sixth grader and a second grader, and she wanted to know if like the sixth grader could be in the childcare at the elementary. And I already know, if you know, Marka Zingo, who I know many of you know, he does a lot of our assessment thing, he's our liaison with Roxanne. Anyway, the YMCA said yes, they, they could take up to age 12. So that, that's a positive. So we are looking at childcare needs of our staff. So we are looking at childcare needs of our staff. So let, let me just, this is my quote, okay? If you want to use it, just credit me, okay? Not a perfect plan, but a well thought out plan that focuses on safety and learning, and it's in that order. I, I just have to tell you, I, I value everybody's opinion. I value obviously the school board's opinion and whatever decisions you make. But I hope you, and I know you do, you guys have been great. I said it the other day on the radio, I say it all the time. At the end, oh, you, you didn't listen then. So, but yeah, at, at the end, whatever decision is made, I am responsible of putting that plan together. And I, I, like you, I'm not doing anything that you're not doing. I spend many, many hours every week talking to people, not just responding in emails. And there's, there's just a very passionate and, and honest concern about people's health and safety. And, and I think some of it is driven by, you know, again, what people are reading and hearing and seeing. A lot of people, you know, when you think about anything in life, just think about your life, think about your children, your parents, your best friends and friends. What you care most about is them to be healthy, okay? At the end, that's, that's, how many times you say that, you know, you think that. I, I always think that. So I know it's not a perfect plan. If there was a perfect plan, I would absolutely present it to you, okay? Why wouldn't I? And if another school system had a perfect plan, I would absolutely take it. But there isn't a perfect plan. There's a lot of ideas and we feel at this point that I hope the school board understands that we're opening, even though we delayed a week, we're still one of the school systems that are opening up the earliest. And there's a lot of work that has to go forward. So I'll just stop here and take whatever questions that you may have. And again, I have a lot of people that I recognized in the first slide online, so they may, I may ask them to answer.
Well, thank you, Dr. Kizner. What I thought I would do first is with the board, if there's any what I would call really like big picture questions first before we dive into sort of, you know, subsection A, B. Are there some broad, large questions in, in general about either the plan or suggestions, things like that? But kind of the big picture, let's start there because I do think staff has thought about, and I know we have all received many, many emails. So, but I think let's talk the global stuff, which is where I think the board needs to be. So Ms. Hollerback, you want to start us off?
I'm sure this is probably first on everybody's list, so maybe we just get it, get it over with. So looking at the, at the hybrid plan, where it's two days and then three days, if there were a contingency of folks that wanted to do, say, we choose that and there's a contingency of folks that want to do 100% virtual, do we have the capacity to accommodate those folks that would want to do 100% virtual?
The answer is yes. With an understanding that in the beginning, we're going to depend greatly on a virtual online curriculum, okay?
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I'll follow up on Ms. Hollerback's question. Actually, that was one of mine. But do we have the capacity to accommodate persons who would want 100% in class?
No. Unless they have, what I earlier described, children with disabilities or some special circumstances. But we are targeting 50% of our class size. So if we open it up for 100%, I just feel like we'll be picking and choosing and exceeding that 50%.
Well, I understand the special ed we need to accommodate, but aren't we not accommodating the rest of the students by not offering them the 100% in class? I mean, it, it seems in, in this case, there would be an imbalance if we're offering 100%. And I, I think you mentioned before, the alternative education would be 100% and special ed is 100%. And the purpose is to meet the educational needs of the students, correct? Is that, that's why we're doing 100% for special ed? Which I have no objection to at all. But if that's the case, I've talked to a lot of parents that said, my child needs to be in school five days a week. My, my child needs to have that in-class instruction. And it seems to me that we're not meeting the needs of a number of students by not being able to offer that. That's, that's an observation. But how can we, how can we justify saying we're going to offer certain groups of students five days a week and not other students?
Okay, I could justify it very easily, okay? Do I disagree with you that I, I want kids in school 100%? I absolutely want kids 100% in school, okay? But as I already stated, we have social distancing requirements and we have social distancing health responsibilities. So if we begin to open it up for 100% of instruction, then we might as well just say we are going to not follow the guidelines for social distancing. And if the board wants to go that direction, then let me know. But, so the children with disabilities and other certain groups, they have individualized plans, as you know, I don't need, you know, I know you know that. But other children, and please, I said this last time and I, to you, I don't want anyone to give anyone the impression that I'm not supportive of 100% instruction, okay? Because I have said this about 15 minutes ago, you can't replace face-to-face learning. I, I think I said that every time we have this meeting. But I also said that I have a responsibility to make sure people are healthy and safe. And if we're going to follow the social distancing guidelines, either way, six feet or three feet, because we already have the three feet on the school buses. So we can't go any less than three feet. And the school board hasn't even yet taken a position on the mask. I hope you can do that tonight because that's going to be a very important part of with the, with the school buses. Because everybody who's allowing three feet on a school bus, and it doesn't matter what recommendation you read, is saying with face covering. But anyway, I'm, I'm sure you'll bring that up. So yeah, I speak to those parents too. I, I, I know many of those parents. They would like their kids in school five days a week. And I, and I would like their kids to be in school five days a week. But at, what am I going to give up? What are we going to give up? It's not me, it's our school system. What are we going to give up? And what we'd be giving up is the health factors that will keep kids and staff safer.
Was based, I thought this half class in school was based on six feet. So I, I had asked this question, but I never got an answer. If, if half a class meets a six-foot guideline, would not a full class meet a three-foot guideline?
No class has kids three feet, no, no kids, no class had kids three feet apart. I mean, as, as a general, there might be some CTE and some labs that have kids three feet apart. The six feet, the 50% is on the six feet. Six feet is still the recommendation. The buses are on three feet. So you can't, even if you wanted to go three feet in your classrooms, which again, I think you'll find a lot of adults finding that very, very alarming if we begin to add a lot more kids into their classroom. That's another big factor in my thinking is the people that work for us, okay? So if we start adding a lot more kids in the classroom, I could see a potential problem with how our staff that we need to consider greatly are going to react. But anyway, setting that aside, to do six feet or three feet on the, in the classroom is already being driven by the school bus. Because if we wanted to add more kids, then we're talking about more bus routes and more back and forth. So we are going to end up reducing the length of the school day because the buses are just going to be going more and more trips to get more kids into the classroom. So again, do I hope that this ends up being a short-term plan? Absolutely. Do I want more kids back in school full-time? Do I want all the kids back in school full-time? Absolutely. But right now, I would just advise all of you very strongly, we're not at that point. And I just need to say something which maybe I shouldn't say. But I, I know everybody's talking about examples. I could talk about a very specific example of a country where my daughter taught that did not have a good experience of opening up schools. And so I, I would just say, we're, our plan is, is consistent with the best guidelines to keep people safe. What happened? Oh, the sun, the sun. The good news, Irene, the only thing they can see is right up here. They don't know you're in the corner.
All right. For, for those that are listening, we are having some light difficulties. So we are moving some things around, but we are being flexible.
I need a timeout.
We're trying to be problem solving. So I'm going to move next to, to Dr. Warner for broad questions, if possible.
Okay, this, this question I hope is a broad one. Do we have thresholds for when we might have to shut down a classroom or a school? And we have, do we have a policy, is the health department going to assist us with testing? And so that we can get timely results back?
Testing for COVID-19?
Yes.
So we talked about, and I, we talked about this at our morning meeting. So there, we don't have a policy to, so one question we received was, is there going to be testing requirements for our staff, okay? And, and the answer that I gave is no, but there is plenty of opportunities in, in Stafford if you want to get tested. And so for example, the C, CVS, you know, the health department and other areas. And what, again, Colette's on the phone, so she could answer the question.
I was thinking more in terms of if we have a student or a teacher test positive.
I apologize, I do it as a prevention.
Specifically, I, I, I think that, that outside of, you know, before we start, I think that's up to the individuals. But if we have a problem within the school, then do we have a mechanism in place, number one, to determine what the threshold would be to say shut down a classroom or shut down a school? And do we have any, any, any relationship for getting rapid testing?
Yes, we do.
Because the problem is if it takes a week to get a test result and, and you have people going to class, you could end up with a real hotspot.
Yeah, the answer is yes, yeah.
Dr. Chase?
I'm just going to piggyback and then I'll ask my question, but I didn't hear what the threshold was. So have we determined that yet or is that still something you're developing?
No, so if I understand the question, if a school or a classroom was determined that, there's a problem, let's use that term. Do we have a relationship with our local health department to get people tested? Oh, so, so shut it down again is a collaborative conversation with the health department. And there's going to be a decision tree that they're going to work with each school division. But even, so let me give you an example, okay? I'm the person bringing food to the classroom, okay? I've only been in Susan's classroom for two minutes. I dropped the food off, okay? And you don't see me again. I am now tested positive for COVID-19. The people in the cafeteria potentially are high risk and we may need to close down the cafeteria. But because I was only in that classroom to two minutes and I dropped it off at the front of the door, her classroom would not be at risk, okay? But if there was a longer-term exposure, so it's not as simple as somebody's just tested positive or determined to be positive. It's a situation, and now what I'm going to do, which I should have done five minutes ago, hey, Colette, you want to add to that?
Sure, Dr. Kizner. So in your example, the cafeteria staff is exposed. The cafeteria staff that has been exposed within six feet for more than 15 minutes, we're going to discuss the exposure with the health department and they're going to probably recommend that that staff be quarantined for 14 days because that's the incubation period for COVID-19. We would close off the cafeteria itself for about three to four hours to make sure the droplets settle, have our custodial services go in with the electrostatic disinfecting equipment, clean the cafeteria. And once that process is fully complete, then be able to access the cafeteria again, hopefully with a next set of staff to man the cafeteria. There is no real threshold. The, the Virginia Department of Health will tell us that it's on a case-by-case basis, you know, whether we close a classroom or not. It's, it's really the number of students that are exposed that will be in that primary exposure area that will be asked to quarantine. And then depending on how many classes they're in, like in a high school situation, it might involve several classrooms of students. If it's a high school student that becomes ill, you know, at third block, then first and second block classes that the child was in, as well as the current class would be affected by the exposure and the, and the children that rode the bus in with that child. And those would be all contacted. Those areas would need to be disinfected and those students might need to be home for that 14-day quarantine period. Unless, and as long as they stay, you know, symptom-free, then can return after that 14-day period.
Can I just follow up? The problem isn't, isn't if they're symptom-free because we know that up to 40% of cases are, can be asymptomatic. I'm wondering, do we have a strategy for, if, if we have a teacher or a student in a classroom that tests positive, do we have a strategy for testing the people that they may have come in contact with them?
The problem with testing in that way, Dr. Warner, is that the test is only good for the day that you're tested. So if you're exposed today and you get tested today, it's going to be a negative test. You can still become positive up to 14 days later. So there is a, there is a limitation with the testing that has to be understood. So even though you're negative today, because of the exposure, you still need to be quarantined for that 14-day period. At the end of that 14-day period, if you come through quarantine without symptoms, the doctor will release you to return to your full activity. Did that help clarify that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere, Colette.
Okay.
Yeah, so I had a question. You, you mentioned in the presentation about that stay-at-home when sick will need to be strictly enforced. So how are you envisioning enforcing that to, to really discourage parents from sending children to school when they're sick? I mean, and, and I don't care whether it's sick with COVID or sick with, with the cold or whatever because we aren't going to be able to tell the difference in some cases. So what, what's your thought in terms of how you would enforce stay-at-home when sick?
My thought is that I believe right now, and this is not Stafford, I think it's a typical practice that probably happens almost everywhere, we give a free pass, okay? Your, your kid comes to school and they're sick. We put you in the nursing station and we try to get in touch with you. And if we do, your parent picks you up and, and we say, I hope you feel better. And now it has to go a step further. The principal has to have a conversation with the parent and say, our rule is, you're, now again, there might be times where a kid, they get sick during the school, okay? That does happen, let's not, okay? But there are probably some times where kid gets out of the car, off the school bus and goes right to the nursing station, okay? The, and Colette, do you want to touch upon this? Does that ever happen?
Yes, that does happen very frequently. Mommy gave me the red stuff this morning because I don't feel well and sent me to school and they look peaked, they're pale. They might not have a fever. And they look peaked, they're pale, they might not have a fever because the red stuff's working. But we do have that a lot in the, in the 18 years I've been doing this, that every, you know, I've been at the high school, I've been at the elementary school. There, there are those children that come in and walk in the door, say they don't feel good, their tummy hurts and, you know, next thing you know, they're throwing up. So, you know, we just want the community to be educated and understand more fully that especially with this virus, if your child is sick, we really need you to, you know, be conscientious and keep them home. They can't learn when they're not feeling well. If their tummy's hurt, that's all they can focus on. And so, you know, sending them to school, I know, gets parents to be able to get to work, but it doesn't really help their child in the long run. And now with COVID, it makes it more of a problem for exposure.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, I, I shared with members of the board, a Zoom call with a pediatrician who was giving a presentation to the Loudon School Board. And his, he said that really there needs to be some real teeth to this stay at home when sick. And his recommendation was you send your kid school to sick and, and it's happening multiple times, then your kid gets to be remote from now on. So I don't know to what extent this board wants to think about that, but it, it, this is a big deal. People need to take it really seriously that they keep their kids home if their kids are sick. And I don't know how we want to handle that, but it's important. So I, I would like to hear more about suggestions or ideas of how, how to really encourage families to not send their kids to school sick. And I, and I know there are times when you don't know and on all of that.
The key thing, I like you said, is families, which I really think is parents, is I don't want to create a situation where the child is caught into adults making bad decisions. Okay. And, and that's the challenge, like you got to, and that's why I think in the beginning, having the principal having the conversation and making it clear that this is unacceptable. I think in most cases, I would like to believe that the parent will respond to that.
Okay. And, and I just want to, I, I absolutely agree with you about children being punished for adults making the bad decision, but in this case, many other people's children will be punished by this bad decision. Right? Other children could develop COVID because a parent sends their, made that bad decision about their child. It's not just their child that would be affected. So I think it's important to realize that it's, it's a lot more than just one. Yeah, there's going to be a big snowball effect potentially.
Yes. Okay. Well, I just want to thank every, all of these collaborative teams, first of all, for all their hard work all through summer. And I have several global questions, but just to stay on this one, Dr. Kizner, you and I had that question about, I'm going to follow up on the, the one on, the question that we had on one-on-one, which is what is the threshold? We, we had that, that question, I had that question to you in our one-on-one, and there was no answer because it was VDH. I was on that call on Tuesday and VDH did not have an answer. So Colette, thank you very much for at least, you know, confirming the, the thoughts that I had in terms of what that threshold, that critical level would be. My global question then would be that, and you did kind of touched on it, because I was thinking, this is not a political issue. This is not a red or white. Stafford, we are a community and we need to take care of each other because like right now, we have probably about 670 cases. I don't know if it's increased today or yesterday. Prince William have about 6,000. And what I don't want is that a lot of families are thinking that, oh, we could open up school, everybody should be able to go to school. The only reason why we're so low is because we close schools early. And so therefore, if we want to keep the risk down, we need to make sure that we mitigate this risk by not putting all the kids in school at the same time. So I'm totally against putting more kids in school that if they don't have to be in school. As a matter of fact, I would want high school and middle school to stay home and only have elementary and phase it in versus having everybody come in the first week. Because originally, our school started in September. So why can we not just have elementary start early in August and wait to see what happens? Because in two weeks, we will know if there's a breakout. We need to protect our teachers, we need to protect our bus drivers, administrators, and the children. We have to think about these children. Now to my question. If there is a outbreak and a child, because the parents are being forced to go to work, the parents that are on the forefront are forced to go to work, they're going to go to work. The ones that are going to work are the ones that cannot afford childcare, they're putting their kids anywhere and, and going to work and then they come home, a kid gets COVID. We don't know why kids are not getting COVID right now. I know because they're not in school. Once they start coming to school, we're going to see more kids. So if there is a break, if there is an outbreak and a kid tests positive, we don't know who the kid is, but the class needs to be quarantining for 14 days. The best class get online instruction and then until, you know, it's over and then be able to come back into the classroom? Is that how it's going to work?
Yeah, that's a good question. Let me just say one thing, there's been over a thousand cases in Stafford, just so you know.
Oh, wow. Fair enough. Okay, I was looking at the wrong paper then. Okay.
Yeah, I get every day an update on, on new cases. So that's why I know that. But anyway, so again, I know sometimes you were just saying, could you just say yes or no, like what's the answer? So again, the answer to me is like, have you ever been in a situation where somebody told you, you might have COVID? You're not thinking right now, do I want to learn remotely? Okay? Okay. There, there's a human part to this whole thing. Now, I know everybody's focusing, if the kid loses a day or two of learning, he's going to fall apart. That's not happening. Matter of fact, I tell you, sadly, I'm writing an article for a journal that for a lot of kids, I'm, I'm digressing a lot, that school closure might have actually, school hasn't been a great place for them while it's open. I'm just saying that. So, but, so my answer to you is will we offer it? But we also have to put the stress. I've had relatives, I got tested for COVID, I didn't have it. While I was waiting for the results, I got to tell you, you're nervous, you're worrying, right? When that doctor calls, the, the office called, I'm thinking, oh God, what is, what's the answer? And the answer obviously was good, but, so will that be available? But we have to, we have to weigh what's going on in that family's situation, that child's situation. So things will always be available, but then this is where our, our human part of our job has to, to take the forefront.
Is that the answer?
No, 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 what else is? It's not a yes or no.
I know, you went through a story, so I was waiting for the punchline here, but okay, thank you so much.
I'm just telling you, I mean, it'll be available, but, but I, I just don't think, okay, now you're quarantined for 14 days, you may have COVID-19, but by the way, please get online so we can start early.
Okay, well, Colette, can you help him out?
I can do the health part. You know, I, I don't know about the virtual part, that's not my, my, my venue, to be honest. You know, I, I agree with Dr. Kizner. It is a stressful time when you're waiting to hear the results of a test, especially when we know that there are such, you know, untoward outcomes with some of these people that have become ill with COVID. So, you know, are, are the children going to be able to focus and the family going to be able to focus on that online piece? Possibly not, but they do have that 14 days. You know, do they need the access? Probably. Because if they're willing, you know, some people do better if they have something to keep their mind on things. So I think we have to be flexible with the ability to offer it, but recognize that they might not really be able to keep up with what's going on.
Actually, my question is like, okay, so if it's an elementary school kid, it's just a classroom. But if this child is a middle school or high school, when they're, when, how are we going to trace all of those kids? And all those kids have to be quarantined? That's my question, actually, for the older kids, for example.
That, we would have to track that schedule in, in every classroom that that child was in and people who had contact with that child for more than 15 minutes are going to be the ones that are going to be quarantined. So it would be, you know, potentially a larger number. I believe the high school setting is trying to limit the amount of class movement as much as possible, but there is going to be some class changing going on.
Okay, thank you for that.
Ms. Randall?
I don't really have any global questions. More of my questions are on the different slides. So I'm happy to wait until we get on the slides.
Okay, because I, let me make my broad, my broad comment. What I would like to see as part of this plan and is some discussion. I know we got to work on the plan, is the evaluation model. And Dr. Kizner and I have talked about this, that the community knows that we have in place some kind of in, and I'm going to defer to, to staff and the board to come up with, you know, is it 30 days that we really sit down and say, okay, where are we? Because I think we owe that to our community and to ourselves and to everybody to have that evaluation process. I know we got to get there first, but I do think that that's an important part of whatever plan we put out there. So I'm just throwing that out as just sort of a broad idea, not to nail it down tonight. But I do think that in general, that's something that will help us and, and everybody going on. So again, that's just sort of a broad comment that, that I have. So I was going to go next to, I wasn't going to do it slide by slide, I was going to say virtual learning questions and we would go around on that. Is, oh, no?
Yes.
I guess this question can go to either or. The, Dr. Kizner had mentioned something before that he had a conversation with someone about, you know, trying to keep little Johnny with Fred down the street because they're friends and whatnot. I guess the idea is to keep at least families together. Some of the families, some, we have a lot of blended families, you know, people who have gotten remarried, have brought, you know, children in that have different last names. How are we going to account for that kind of scenario?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our student information management folks are migrating last names and addresses. So, and we could drill down to, if it's a complex that has five homes in a, you know, townhomes, so it's, it's driven a lot by how many people live, families that are living in that, under that same roof. Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
What is the distinction between the full-time virtual learning, which I support for families that want to choose that for their children, and the virtual learning that's going to be two days a week?
So the two day a week or three day a week virtual learning will be more led by our staff as they will be designing the instruction, they will be delivering the instruction, and they will be monitoring the instruction. The 100% remote, our staff will still have a part of monitoring it, but the designing and delivery, delivering of it can also include, will include an outside educator.
The virtual learning, whether it's two or three days a week under the proposals that our staff is going to be leading, is that intended to complete what the child would have in terms of instruction if they were in class five days a week?
Yeah, many of it will be to continue the learning that would have been if they were in school a greater period of time.
So, so hypothetically, if we have a hybrid situation, would a student who is in school two days a week and three days of virtual, would they be getting the same instruction as if they were in school five days a week?
Well, I would say no, because five days a week in school, I still say consistently is a stronger education than two days and three days.
Dr. Warner?
With the 100% online virtual learning, will those students have like a teacher that is a contact person for them within the school?
They'll have a teacher time, yes. Well, no, no, it could be an outside, like I was saying earlier. Yeah.
Dr. Chase? Yeah. So I noticed that you, I know you're, you're advocating for option, schedule A, but you left schedule B up there, option B up there. And I just, still just want to ask the question, and, and I'm sure it's a question, I don't know the answer, but, I mean, I just wonder at the elementary school level, if you're getting two and a half days of instruction with half as many students in the classroom, might that be better than having two days on and three days off with, I mean, just, it's just sort of, I'm, I'm just really kind of wrestling with, you know, what that remote is going to look like for children whose parents really don't have the facilities at home to be doing the, the remote activities with their kids? And, and so I just, it's, yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just.
I, I think it's a great question, which I actually question also. Would, would it be better to do five out of 10 days and forget the remote? I mean, that's, that's simply, and, and I don't really know the answer to that. I think that goes to maybe Holly's question of evaluating. If we find our engagement after the first month that, and I'll make this number up, 50% of the elementary kids are not doing the remote, then I think we need to revisit if this model is really meeting the need. I, I do wonder that. I don't have any metric to tell you which one is a better way of doing it, but there's something makes me think that.
Well, and especially, especially for like K through two, you know, so, so just, just throwing that out there.
No, I think it's.
And, and, and when I say that, I'm, I'm treating it as, yeah, no, the teachers are not going to be preparing all kinds of remote things to do, but that they would just really hit it hard for those five out of 10 days with those students and, and not have that expectation that at home, they're going to be doing all kinds of other stuff. But I'm not the expert, it was just, just a question I puzzled through.
The other thing that I do need to look into if we went this round, and I don't have an answer on this, is the state's position on attendance. Okay? And, and how that could potentially impact this. So, but I, I still think it's, I, I know it's a great question because I have thought of this, so, so it has to be a quick one. Okay, thank you.
Let me piggyback. So let me put a plug in there for Pam's plan, which is elementary and middle and high school at home, but elementary using all the schools so that we could spread out. But that was one of my one-on-one questions with Dr. Kizner, he was like, we don't have the teachers, but if we have more teachers out there, maybe we could have, you know, elementary in school every day, as many days as possible. But anyway, back to my question. Do we at this time have one-on-one computers for all kids and, I mean, all kids having access to internet? And then in order for this to work, we need more money, of course, because we need to be able for those individuals that are at the frontline, if they are working and their kids are at home remote. And for those days that they are remote, we need to be able to, when they are in school, there is childcare available so that the parents could work and then pick up their kids after they're done working versus trying to figure out a way, getting these kids to, you know, childcare again after semi-school for a couple of hours. So my question is, one, do we have one-on-one computers and internet access?
Okay, so I could answer the first part, absolutely yes, we will have when all the Chromebooks come in. Internet access is not going to be yes for every place. If you remember the priorities I put down, one of the priority groups are kids that we know don't have internet access, or we have to look at another way, like I was mentioning the packages. But I think there are going to be some children that, where they live, that broadband and hotspots, you know, we're still going to try with the Kajits, but there, I'm hearing there's limitations with that, we're working with the county. I, I do want to, before I lose sight of this, about, because you mentioned money, I, I do want to thank the county, we did put a request in for additional CARES Act money, their CARES Act money that was dedicated for cleaning supplies, helping with transporting meals. Long story short, everything we asked for, they approved. Long story short, everything we asked for, they approved. Okay? So I do want, before I lose sight of that, they did approve that. And my understanding, they're going to shift that.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors.
So, so I do want to mention something that I did not mention because I don't have an, an exact dollar amount, but there is a dollar cost to it. And it goes to your question. On the K-12, Inc. model, there is a cost associated with that program. And it's going to depend greatly on how many people are seeking the 100% virtual. And the cost will be broken down by the month because again, we, we do see some shifting. I'm not prepared to tell you what that number is. If I knew the number, I'd definitely tell you. But I will tell you, that's probably something, now Chris is, is not here today. I'm going to work with him. You might have read in the newspapers today that the state revenues is actually better than they were originally thinking. So maybe the sales tax, you know, I'm trying to be optimistic here. There may be, the lottery we found out was better. And now maybe the sales tax will be better. So maybe, you know, we'll, we'll have more funding. And then if you read the paper today also, it seems like the, there might be some more CARES Act money being distributed to localities and hopefully school systems. So anyway, so the answer to your question, yes, between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board budget, we were able to receive enough funding to make sure every child has a Chromebook. But I'm not going to sit here and tell you that every kid will have access to.
Yeah, I, I know I did ask, I'm not going to mention the board's names, but for some more money for childcare, because this is where you see the inequity, where the parents that have to go to work and they can't afford childcare. And the fact that if we had enough money, that, you know, we could cover that cost for those kids, you know? And so I think that's COVID. I mean, it's part, this is why we're here. It's a pandemic. The reason why we're doing this is because of the pandemic. I don't understand, like, are we, are, are, we're not doing this because we want to. This is what we have to do. So we have to also help these parents out because like right now, we're doing all these moving and shaking. And then are we taking into consideration these parents that are wondering, how am I going to cover, you know, the time that my child has to be in childcare? They don't have that kind of funds. And so I think that it's COVID funds. Can somebody just talk about it that way versus saying it's just childcare? It's not childcare. It's, 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 it's a COVID pandemic we're in right now. And as a community, I think we need to help each other out. I understand some people don't want their taxes to go up, but we need more money.
Ms. Randall?
Okay, as I ask my question here, I also want to just make sure that while we, Dr. Kizner has said this, and I really want to make sure we echo this because we do have a lot of staff that are watching and we're talking, and it seemingly in some of the emails and in the conversations I've seen, it seemingly feels to them that we're caring more about getting the kids in school and not about their health. And we've definitely discussed that in this room today, but I just want to make sure I reiterate the fact that our teachers' health and their safety and therefore their families, as at Ripple's home, is a priority for us as well as we move forward to find a plan. And we're not, I just want to make sure they don't think that we're not considering them in this. I mean, they sent us 35 pages of concerns and I went through about half of them and made tallies on different areas of concern for them. So I could like just kind of put it in my head. And safety and security is obviously first and foremost for them. So as we talk about whether we go back the 50/50 or the hybrid or the full virtual, one of the questions that I have is, you mentioned for the 100% virtual learners, it's K-12, Inc. is the company, but it's more geared K-5. And then Edgenuity for, is, is that also middle school?
Middle, high.
And high school. Why do we choose Edgenuity versus Virtual Virginia? I've read in different counties that some do go with Virtual Virginia versus Edgenuity. And I, I didn't know that. And the second part is that if we take a class offline, whether it be a class or some students in a class, or however that ends up being, it obvious doesn't mean that because you're, you were exposed that you're going to be sick or you get it light or whatever, you're home. Do you, will they have the possibility of joining their class virtually? Or do they go and get put right into our Edgenuity or K-5?
So you're saying the two days in which.
Or even the four days, because I mean.
Be a blend of virtual and.
Like they're home now. They can't come back for 14 days.
Oh, no, about those kids, that, that.
So if they're in, and I understand what Colette was saying, you know, you don't feel good, you don't have to. But if you feel fine, I mean, like, they don't need necessarily a two-week vacation. So.
Yeah, their virtual experience would be to join their class.
So how would they do that? Would they like zoom in?
Well, that's a great question, and I don't have a great answer for it.
Okay, okay.
But I do want to ask Matt or Jan that are on, I feel like this is like a game show.
He's phoning a friend.
Calling a friend. Could you, could you answer that question of, of the two programs that we selected?
I'll start and maybe Matt can add in. So Mrs. Randall's first question has to do with the proposed recommendation for Edgenuity and why not Virtual Virginia? So to qualify the Virtual Virginia that I believe you are referencing is the VDOE release of the platform Virtual Virginia. Those releases are available in high school and middle school content beginning July 15th, all the way through August 1st. And in order to align, choose and align that with our curriculum and pacing guides, with our start date of August 17th, we will be adding that to our choices as we begin. But to get started, we are highly recommending that the majority of our, our teachers of record in online already have been using Edgenuity very successfully in the summer learning experience. So you will see us build resources in our own Canvas LMS as the year begins. So the scheduling of the release of the Virtual Virginia content is coming so late in the summer for us to provide the necessary professional learning for our teachers and, and set up those, let's just say, folders to make it a robust experience for our kids.
Okay. And then what about the, is, is it for Jan and Matt as well?
Yeah, Jan and Matt, stay on, stay on board.
So is the, so a class, a kid is quarantined for 14 days. Do, how, if they want to stay involved, obviously not fall two weeks behind in a class, do they have the option of zooming in? Or do they automatically get edged over to Edgenuity or K-5?
So, um, no, they wouldn't. So what we're trying to do, the most important bottom line piece of any of these scenarios is if you're assigned a teacher, that teacher is responsible for your learning. And we want to stay with that same teacher and that, that whole relationship for the students. Because even that 14-day out of school is stressful for a student. So they would stay and we would just switch to the delivery of those two days of face-to-face. Those would be two days of a combination synchronous, you know, learning. In terms of zooming, you're, you're talking about real-time live video. Looking across K-12, that would vary obviously depending on the age of the student.
Sure.
You know, in terms of instructional time. I hope that that helps.
Yeah, there are some challenges and really some legal problems with zooming into a classroom. There's some privacy issues where.
It's even in our student code of conduct, I think, too, about that.
Yeah, so it, it would, we're not, we're not, we're not going to allow that to be truthful because you could have a child in the classroom that's whatever, and then somebody's in their living room or kitchen table and say, look, what's going on in the classroom and things like that. But if there's a way in which we could control that. And again, the other thing that we've talked a lot about is we want that teacher to focus on the children in front of her.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and the other, there's other ways of getting the information to the student. But that, in fairness to that teacher, he or she is going to have, you know, 15, 20 kids in front of them.
Right.
But anyways, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just follow on that same line of thought. And this may depend on content. I always think of math because some of us are not quick math learners. It was there or is there some thought, and like I said, this may not be in part our rolling out plan of recording some class content, not with a Zoom, but like a recording of how to do a math problem. Because some of us don't learn it the first time around.
That's a great question.
Or, or science or some other stuff that a child who may struggle with watching it, but might be able to watch it later. Is there some ability for that potentially?
I, I know the answer, but you, you say it so much better than I do.
Well, let's see. Let's see how I do tonight. So absolutely, and that's what a learning management system can do for you because that recording of that particular presentation or hands-on, Mrs. Hazard, I think that was Mrs. Hazard or.
You got it.
Yep, absolutely can be placed in a learning management system. Understand that when Dr. Kizner was referencing some other platforms like Edgenuity and like K-12, Inc., that is common and it's already been, there are situations where it's already been recorded and ready to go. Your teachers in this school division, we want to give them the professional learning and the time to learn to do that. And I do want to let you know that this summer, and as you know, there are teacher leaders out there that are already doing this and have done it before. So yes, that, that is something that is being built into the design and the professional learning also.
If I could just make then the broader statement there. If, if we believe that a learning management system, I think that's the word that you used, I, I, I wouldn't know what to call it. Or a platform or the building of the platform or whatever, like I said, me and the technical area is scary. If that is a cost or an identifiable cost, I would submit to the Fab or to us as a board. If there is some, to me, that is an identifiable need that we may need throughout, whether, you know, I certainly pray that COVID is not. But this may also be a platform that may be able to reach some of our students in many different ways for years to come. So I'm just saying as a broader investment, certainly we have a little more crisis to do it. But even thinking, what is its long-term ability to assist students who sometimes may or may not, for COVID or other reasons, may not be able to attend school, also to deliver a great learning experience?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate that comment and not to get too far ahead, but I think this experience gives us an opportunity to reimagine the way we've been doing things.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I don't think, you know, again, I'm, if January 1, we get a memo that everything is fine, vaccine, you know, there's a lot that we have learned from this experience that I think we could leverage moving forward. Okay? And I, I will say there is going to be a cost. There's no question. I would tell you if the survey, if I didn't extend it, I feel like I need to. I think I've got enough feedback that the survey needs to be extended. I would, probably would have had a preliminary course for you on the Tuesday. But I will definitely, I think the Fab is, well, no, they're meeting on, anyway. By the 21st, I'll be able to give you a course. And the course that we'll share with you is a monthly, and then you could do the math to multiply it throughout the year. Okay?
Can I just ask, do you have any initial numbers on, on people who so far returned to the, the forms of what percentage of those people want 100% remote? And how, what percentage are planning to transport their children themselves? Do you have any rough numbers yet?
It's very rough and I'm almost fearful of putting it out because the numbers change. The bus, I don't have that answer. The remote, and this is rough, okay? And this is maybe even, what's today, Tuesday? Now, what is, it's a Thursday, right?
It's not the school board meeting. This is a work session.
I've only worked, I've only worked two days this week. That's terrible. But I, I, I don't, can't give you the end, but I've heard the number 15%, I heard the percentage, about 15%. But again, it's, I'll have much better for you next Tuesday. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
All right, I was going to ask around, go ahead, Ms. Young.
I just wanted to, feedback on what, what you said about the online learning. I think I agree with Chairwoman Healy, Hazard, sorry. It's so, my apologies. That it's, it's good to continue the fact that we have online. I think it's good to continue that simply because like I, I do it right now on my doctorate program. And it's, it is something, as you go through it, it gets better, you get better and better at it. But we need to keep that because I think that not only for the future, but like there are high schoolers that could use that if, you know, if they're sick or whatever the case might be, but also parents, and I think it's important, or, or students that are a little older and don't want to be in a classroom. I think this, this invites them to want to do online for high school. So I think it's very important that we continue that. And, and we, we look at, you know, outside the box on how we teach, like you said. So I just wanted to add value to that.
So what I wanted to do, I sort of thought we had maybe two more rounds of questions. We may have covered all of them, but this set of questions I thought would focus on things that we haven't dealt with regarding safety. I feel like we have talked a fair amount about if someone gets sick in the schools. If you still have questions, I'm not saying don't go there, but I think there's probably other areas that people have comments on. Just for the sake, a little bit of time, also if there's any specific questions about elementary, middle school or high school, I, I had that. But I wanted you all to put on your thinking caps for the last set of comments. And this will be more comment than, than questions, in my opinion. Having heard all of this as board members, I believe most of, a lot of our job is certainly to listen, but I believe also one of our most important jobs is to advocate. And what have we heard tonight that has come to mind, saying, maybe we need to advocate in this area or something like that? So that's going to be the last round of questions. So I'm giving everybody a little fair warning of that. So I thought we'd start first with safety. And if you don't have one there or you want to.
We start on this side.
I was going to go that way. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Young. Or, and/or if you have a specific elementary school, middle school or high school question, is that? So Ms. Randall, I'll start with you and we'll go this way.
Okay, my question is for, I think mostly John Anderson, but I think if you know, jump in or you can phone your friend. So in looking at the ventilation for the schools, of course, I have an old one, but we have lots of old ones in this county. We've been dealing with HVAC. A couple of things, since we haven't been in the schools, are we at least running ACs every now and then to make sure that everything is staying working? Kind of like, are we still running buses to make sure all of our buses are working? But I'd like to know, how are we doing with ventilations and filtrations, especially with our older schools?
I am going to call a friend, John.
Thank you. Yes, I can answer that. The first question related to running the air conditioning and mechanical systems during the summer. We always do that. That's normal. Because if they're shut off completely, that can lead to problems with the schools and too much humidity. With regards to the ventilation and the issues that we're dealing now with the coronavirus, I think that you're, you're asking, how is that being addressed with our systems when schools open? Is that correct? Ms. Randall?
Yes, that is correct. Because one of the things that, like the, the, I guess I'm looking for the number of recycled air versus fresh air?
Yes. So I spoke with several engineers about this and also our operation and maintenance staff over the past few months. We've been talking about this a lot, actually. And the, the situation is that we need to change our filters like we do. That's a, that's always important with or without the virus. Also, the fresh air is really designed for each system, including the older systems. There's fresh air that's used and and you don't want to use too much and you don't want to use too little. And so we're evaluating that at all of the schools. We can check that over the summer, but it's really more effective when the schools are fully occupied and in in full operation mode. So these checks are going to be really important when school starts. And we have that already um, already budgeted with train, with the contract that they've been working on. That's one of the things they're doing for about half of the schools. And so we have a proposal and we're going to have that also um, done for the other schools. And that's really going to be to make sure that the targeted fresh air is being delivered at each school. And we're really going to be just looking for malfunctions. Is the fresh air coming out in and is the exhaust working properly?
And what about water? And what about water in all of the buildings? Has the water been flushed and even samples taken so that, you know, we don't have an issue with that?
The the water is typically flushed and and definitely is being flushed um, this summer to prepare for school opening. And that's a normal process to just help eliminate stagnant water. We do have some water testing that's scheduled. It's not really associated with that. It's it's something that that's done periodically and we have that that's um, on the horizon. So we'll be um, doing some checks that are also normal, but not not yearly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. This is just to piggyback off of, since I had one of those questions also on my list. Is the airflow contributing to the circulation of COVID if it's in one of the 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 schools? Do we know that for sure? Or do we have to wait until it happens?
I can answer that also from what I understand, and I'm not a scientist, that there is concern about um, the virus particles being able to move um, within a system because um, schools and really buildings all over the country have recirculating air. So the air is coming and going from the mechanical systems. And so it's possible, the engineer that I spoke to said that it would not be likely it would be if there is um, a sort of extreme case of infection in a school, that those particles could be distributed that way. But it is something that's of concern and and being discussed quite a bit, um, which is why the the filters have to be changed and the the systems have to be maintained. The fresh air basically dilutes um, the the air. So you're you're adding fresh air to um, air that I guess is is less less fresh, even though it's all running through the same system. Does that answer your question?
It it doesn't answer it, but it it puts the light on the question that I really had was the health of the staff. Because um, I I just feel that we're we're putting a lot of uh, teachers, administrators and and the staff itself in these buildings, hours at end. And um, I don't know, and this is not my lane, Dr. Kizner, but the questions about hazard pay. Not 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 as in Chairwoman Hazard, but hazardous pay. Like if they, if they fall ill, um, and you know, couldn't directly trace it to that, you know, is there some kind of hazard pay? I mean, that that's a question.
Well.
How how do we cover that? How do we cover their health?
I I I I, I'm not going to just answer that now.
Okay.
Okay. That that the, I need a lot more to define hazardous pay. I, if we're gonna, then all of us right now should get hazardous pay. I mean, I mean, your house.
If I'm sitting next to him, I want hazard pay.
I I.
And so that's on their mind.
Yeah.
That's on their mind.
No, I I understand it. I I just, I I need to operationalize the term hazardous.
Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you so much. That that's that's all I have in terms of risk.
Ms. Um.
Security.
Ms. Hazard, may I ask one more part that's sort of with that?
Sure.
Um, John, I was, or Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry. I was also wondering, um, they, um, with the filtration in the room, another factor that was mentioned was humidity. And I know at Ferry Farm, we have dehumidifiers throughout our fourth and fifth grade hall. But um, are we, are we able to, especially like you said, I know it probably can't be done until the schools are full or well, halfway or whatever we do, um, to make sure that the air quality of the room, humidity wise, is at a level that's making the room safer for our students and staff?
Yes, ma'am. That is something that we'll be checking at Ferry Farm. And um, we've talked about that specifically with the engineer and the operation and maintenance staff. They'll be um, looking at those um, older systems as well as the newer systems that are going to be coming online.
What about the other 32 schools?
We're looking at all of them.
Dr. Chase?
Yep. So um, I wanted to just ask Dr. Kizner, is there anything you need from the board sooner rather than later in terms of making decisions? And I I know that you had in your slide presentation at one point, a question about masks. And I think another question is about start times. Do you need that information sooner or later? I've certainly been getting many, many emails from parents of elementary school students very concerned about sending their children to school if people aren't wearing masks. I I know there are a lot of teachers who are very concerned about being in a classroom and their safety if children are not wearing masks. So I just was curious if if you need anything from us with respect to either one of those things, or if you need to just take sort of a.
He needs a vote.
A temperature. I I don't know if we can vote in a work session.
I'm glad you asked. I'm I'm. So you guys have been asking me a lot of questions, what I'm going to do and what we're going to do to keep people safe? I'm gonna ask you guys one thing. Make a decision on the masks.
Yes.
People are demanding to know. People are not returning their surveys and to know. This is, I made this comment a couple of meetings ago. This one, I'm putting on you guys. Okay? So uh, let's be a partner on this, all right? And so I would like before tonight's over, and maybe maybe that was the finale, like the Fourth of July, the big fireworks, we were going to wait till the end.
It was Juneteenth.
But because we're talking about health, this is the rounds on health, this seems to be a very appropriate time. And so the answer, thank you, Dr. Chase, for asking. I absolutely want you to make that decision now. I think people are watching, waiting for that decision. And um, I also will tell you, unless you're going, there's four of you that want to change it, transportation needs to make their schedule route. So I'm I'm, and maybe this is the wrong assumption, but my assumption that I have to operate because school's starting August 17th, unless we change it, is that if I'm not hearing four of you objecting, then we're moving forward on this plan. Because I, there's so much planning that has to take place. But to answer your first, I need the mask, the face covering. I've been told to use the word face covering. The face covering decision to be resolved before you leave tonight.
Well, I I just wanted to share my my son was sharing with me today, discussions of how Mr. Rogers would present wearing masks and and what the episode would look like if Mr. Rogers were working with young children about masks. And and I think, I I don't know the disposition of the entire board. For me, I'm I'm in favor of of masks. I think we ask people to wear shoes. It's not really all that different to ask people to to have a mask or a face covering. And I think uh, one of the advantages of letting people know sooner is maybe people in the community can help make masks or donate masks so that that we'll we'll have what we need in the schools, so.
I'd like to follow up on Ms. Young and Ms. Randall's question to to Mr. Anderson. Will we, will your maintenance staff have a schedule for not only changing the filters, but evaluating that all the airflow systems are functioning properly and that humidity levels that are optimal for suppressing the viral transmission are are being maintained? Will that be done regularly during, once we do open the schools up?
The answer is yes, but I'll let John answer. John, do you?
The answer is yes. And that's, that's also something that we do normally. And and so especially now, it's important.
Yeah, I didn't know if maybe you needed to change that schedule to something more frequent in light of the fact that obviously this is a airborne pathogen. I would just like to say, most of my career, I've worn a face covering. So it's it's not done um, to to keep you safe so much, but to keep other people. And I think in the, this virus particularly, you have to assume everybody's potentially got it because so many people can present asymptomatic. It is one of only three methods we have for controlling this virus. A face covering, social distancing, and um, it's in in staying home and self-isolating and hand washing. Yes, you can hand wash. I think that one of the things that's going to have to be done as well is that we're going to have to teach children how to put them on and off properly because you you never touch the front of the mask. But also they're going to need to have more than one mask or more than one face covering at school. So they're going to have to reuse them maybe. But maybe on day one, they use this mask and then they put it in a paper bag. And on day two, they use this mask. So we try to minimize, and then they take them home and and they get washed. I mean, we're going to have to have policies for this. This virus, I I know personally 21 people who've had it. Seven of them are dead. Three of them had it for months, sick for months, not just seven to 10 days. 600 healthcare workers in the United States have died. We cannot treat this lightly. And one of the few tools we have is face covering. So um, I strongly advocate that we make that decision. Ms. Healy?
Well, we can't take a vote tonight because this is a work session. But when we do take a vote, which I assume will be at the meeting next week, I will be supporting wearing a face covering. I do think it's important, though, that we have provisions to provide them for our students because there are going to be many that come to school without them. I mean, we can do everything, you know, we can to assume that if if we give them two, you know, one per day at the beginning of the school, they would use it. But realistically, that's not going to happen, particularly with the younger students. So I think we need to have some plan in place that we have um, face coverings that will be made available, you know, to the students that come to school without them. Now, I know if if you lose your agenda book, you have to pay a certain, you know, amount of money. You know, there, maybe we're going to have to do something like that or put it on the tab, whether we collect or not, maybe another matter. But I think that would be a reasonable use of this COVID money. Also, along that vein, I would like us to to look into what we can provide for our staff across the board, anyone who is going to be in contact, you know, with, which would be everyone with either other staff or with with students, with parents, with visitors, whatever, whether it's it's face shields or face coverings or something else that 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 may help. Hand sanitizers, I, we we need to make that available because we all know how much money teachers spend in their classroom. And this is, this is going to be another expense to every one of our staffs, not just the teachers. So I would like to see a plan for that and include that in the projected cost. This is not a luxury, this is a necessity. We mentioned the bathrooms. I use the the restroom here at North Stafford and it has the the old-fashioned faucets that you turn on. The hand dryer was so close to the wall, it was almost impossible to put your hands underneath it. Now, this is one of the, you know, older schools that doesn't have the renovations and in the restrooms, but I think it's something that we need to be assessing. Clearly, we can't do it all before we open school, but we need to be looking into it because I can wash my hands, but if I'm touching those faucets after I wash my hands, you've got to lose some of the benefit of it. Okay, this is just an observation. I'm sure it's in 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 many of our schools, our newer schools would have the the water that you just put your hands under and 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 it turns on. Same thing with soap dispensers. You know, soap dispenser in the restroom I use, you had to push it. So how many people are pushing that to wash their hands, turning the water off and on? I I I I want to encourage washing hands as often as possible, but it seems that we have to do something in between because we're not going to be disinfecting these these faucets and dryers and and soap dispensers every time someone uses uses it. I mean, there's, is there's a way, maybe John can give us a way to do it. We can, but we need to be thinking about that because it's definitely going to be a potential hazard. I mean, I don't see that we are going to eliminate, you know, all the risk, other than if we just said, everybody stay home. And I think I'm hearing that that's not in the best interest of the students, although I I am supporting the families that want to keep their children at home for 100% virtual. I'm supporting us offering a complete virtual pro program that meets the needs of the students for for this year. And and we'll have to see what happens. But um, there's a, there's a lot to think about. And if we need to change the start date of school, I would certainly consider starting the day after Labor Day. We did it for years. I mean, everything, everything is going to be topsy-turvy, you know, in terms of the schedule, in terms of the calendar, we have to be flexible. But if it's going to help us to be prepared for when the students come in, to help both the students and the staff, then I think it's something that we need to think about. So my my final comment has, is 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 more general. And this has to do with childcare. And I I I very much support offering the childcare, you know, for our employees. But I also want to look at offering childcare through the Y or the community. That's how this whole program got started. It was for our parents and our families that needed childcare, that we contracted with the Y to offer it before and after school. And with this change in schedule, which I I have to say, I'm, I'm not supportive of it. I I know I'm in the minority here, but I think this is a huge change in in having the high schoolers go last, elementary go first. It's a significant change with an impact on the families because now the elementary is going to be getting out before 2:00. The high school isn't getting out till close to 5:00. And a lot of the families depend on high schoolers, whether they're in the family or their neighbors or whatever, to take care of the children after after school. So I I would very much appreciate seeing what we can offer to our community, our families in terms of childcare. And I agree with Ms. Young, it may need to be subsidized. If we're going to subsidize it for staff, we should certainly add that on to to our our families. Because this, this is, this is one of the biggest issues that I'm hearing from families is this, this totally turns them upside down in terms of when their children are going to school, who's going to take care of them after school, you know, the families that have to work, even the families that are telecommuting. If a, if a mom and dad or or a single parent is working from home, they can't be taking care of the of the students, just just like all our our staff is 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 letting us know. I mean, our staff's emailing us, what do I do with my kids? Why do my, you know, who's going to take care of my kids when I'm teaching? Well, the same issue is for other parents as well, regardless of whether they work in a, in a restaurant, a hotel, whether they're, they commute to Washington, whatever they're doing, they have a job. And they're not available to take care of their kids or to help their kids with the virtual learning. So whatever we're hearing from the staff, it relates as well to the community in general.
I want to address a couple of quick things.
Well, let me just.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If 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 you could, if you could look into that for, you can address it tonight, but I'd like you to come back at the next meeting and let us know what this capacity of the Y is. And if not the Y, is there some other arrangements? When we were sitting here weeks ago, we talked about reaching out to the local daycare centers, we talked about reaching out to the churches, you know, other opportunities in in the community. Because I I feel that as much an obligation as we have to our staff, I think we have it to our our families as well. So now you can respond.
Ms. Healy. First, let me talk about the mask. First of all, I love that some reason I'm being looked at like I don't want to do these things. Okay? I really appreciate that you might be suggesting to the community that I'm one to disrupt their childcare and all that. But it costs $300,000. I'm just telling you. I've been advocating, I've been yelling that our budget, we went from 121 to 123 per person. I've been advocating, I've been yelling that our budget, we went from 121 to 123 per pupil expenditure. Some of you seem to be comfortable with it. Just to get two masks per child is $300,000. It's going to cost us hundreds of thousands to do the virtual learning. Okay? The elementary switch, I have to tell you, it's interesting, that comment because the YMCA is committing to 6:30 to be at the elementary schools. So those families who are at the elementary school, there is the YMCA program. Okay? So I just let you know, they're going to be there from 6:30 to 6:30. And that's not just for our staff children. It's for any child that goes to school.
That's, I didn't know that. So thank you. That's the first time I heard that.
So a lot of, it's funny because we all hear from different things and maybe we want to hear what we want to hear. So for the elementary parents that have that concern, the YMCA has committed to do 6:30 to 6:30. Yeah, it'll be like auditorium, gym, library, big spaces. Yeah.
Is that going to be in the letter tomorrow?
Well, again, what I'm just trying to share with you is that I have an obligation like you to manage the budget. And as we ask, and again, we're going to have, we've spent, how many masks did we already buy? Somebody answer that question. Colette or John?
It's 50,000.
We bought 50,000 masks to give out when somebody forgets a mask. As we do a list every year and we ask people to get Elmer's glue and magic markers, I do think asking to get a mask because we want them to clean the mask. And when I tell you it's $300,000, $5 a mask about, okay, for the good cause, man. I'm not talking about the fake but thin mask. When we start looking at all our budgetary needs, we just spent a long time talking about the remote learning, the online learning. So it's an interesting thing that I'm telling you as a school board, I'm all in, I need your help to get more money. Okay? I'm the one that wrote the thing for the Board of Supervisors and they responded very favorably. And maybe they will do it again. So I'm not opposed to helping, but I'm not, I need to focus on the main thing. And the main thing, I want parents who struggle to get childcare to help get support. I'm just being honest with you and I'm willing to be honest. I'm willing to be honest and not political and say, I have a budget and my first objective, as I said, is the safety of our people in our building and the instruction. And if we had a budget, just the average, I need the public to hear this, just the average per pupil expenditure, I'm just asking to be average, we would have 70 million more dollars in our budget. Everything you ask for, I could do multiple times. I could change the hair, the hand blowers, I could change this, I could change that. So I'm asking as a partnership, please don't tell me everything that we're going to do because then let me know what we're going to let go of. Okay? So I just want to make that because I'm getting a little exhausted to hear political speeches that sound very attractive to everybody listening because there's a reality check. Okay? I do want people to have childcare. I don't want families to be disruptive. I do want kids in school five days a week. I want everything that everybody else wants, but the difference is I have the responsibility of making everything work. So it's not helpful to me to hear these things that gives the impression that I'm against these things, because I'm not against it. I'm actually remarkably supportive. And I'm looking for you to say the one thing that I think you have a greater role than I do is getting the funding, is getting the funding. So I'm sorry, Ms. Healy, if you feel like I'm jumping on you, but that's how I feel. So she could respond. She always does.
Just briefly, Dr. Kizner. This is not a political speech. I am not here for politics. I am here for the students of Stafford County and for the community, and that's why I've been here for over 20 years. This is a commitment to the community. This is not political.
Okay, thank you. So the mask part, we did buy 50,000 to say. I'm just trying to give you an idea, 100, a lot of days of school the kids will be. When they start losing their masks and leaving their masks behind, I think as we're telling parents, you shouldn't send the kids at school sick and all these other things, there's a part of me says a mask. And honestly, on July, whatever today's day is, I thought it was Tuesday, July 10th. If you don't, you should be owning masks already. Okay, you should have masks. Okay? So yes, if somebody doesn't have a mask, we have masks, as I already demonstrated. We bought 50,000 masks already. But that sounds like a lot, but when they start losing them, it's not a lot. Okay? So and I, again, I'm not disagreeing with anyone. I just have to balance. My job is to balance all the needs.
To Ms. Healy's question, though, are, not to add to the budget, and if there is adding to the budget, just tell us and I'll go ask my person. But is there, are we going to try to supply our staff with either, like she was suggesting, the face shields or mask covers? And if not, if we get that number and we can help you, partner, to get those things, I just feel like, you know, anything that we can do to bless our staff with something that's not on their plate or table or out of their pocket is something that, you know, we would definitely like to. And I'd also just like to put a plug out there to all the sports teams, PTAs and PTOs. You've got a fundraiser right in front of you.
Yeah. So Colette, could you say, share about the face?
Yeah, we've already ordered 2,000 face shields. And I have to get the PO approved for the next 3,000 so that we have them for all the staff and also for hopefully to be able to work with some of our special needs students that can't wear the mask and for our deaf and hard of hearing students that would need a clear protector and our staff that are work, especially, it started out with, for our staff that are working, doing personal care for students that are very up close and personal. So but you had asked us to go ahead and get them for all staff.
Ms. Hollerback?
And I will say the Board of Supervised Actions will allow us to do more, which is, it's, I want to say the number's over, it's a significant amount that they gave us.
Ms. Hollerback?
So I'm going to be supporting the mandatory mask wearing as well for the safety of students amongst each other, but also for our staff. I'm also excited to not hear anybody suggesting that we put, keep kids three feet apart from each other. When I heard that today, I nearly fell out of my chair. So if you needed somewhat of a head count on where you were going with masks, I think you've got it.
Thank you.
We're getting there. Was that your full comments? Did you have any other ones? Okay.
You could get out of timeout.
That's right. For those without the visual, when we were moving some things around, Ms. Hohlerback ended up looking like she was in timeout because of how we moved some things around. So we are sort of joking around with each other. What I would like to just say broadly, again, this is not a formal vote taking. However, I think that the guidance that we can provide to Dr. Kizner, it seems that with regard to the buses, there is, I believe even at the last meeting, I heard somewhat unanimous consent so we can provide the maximum number of students within the guidelines so far. I believe so with regard to buses, it seems like the guidance that we would be allowing you to share with Mr. Suddith is that is something that the Board would support. It sounds like Ms. Randall has a question, then I'll.
Yeah. So when I was looking at the shift one, shift two, and I know you don't know my end of the county and that's okay, but there's one road that runs all the way straight to King George. And if you go to the right, it's Berry Farm. If you go to the left, it's Grafton. Oh, good. Oh, good. Well, I'm out there. So anyways, if you go to the left, that's Grafton. But Grafton is on shift two. And I'm not sure if Berry can relook at that a little bit just because Grafton was on shift one? Oh, I thought Falmouth was. Did I get that wrong? Shift it? Okay. All right, then 86 that one. How do you like it? You just solved it.
He fixed it while we were here.
I'm going to move to Ms. Young. Ms. Randall, were you finished? I didn't.
I, of course, I didn't comment on the mask. I'm sure everybody already knows where I stand with the mask. No, yeah. But I'm not going to be popular with this one. In addition to mask, I wanted to let, you know, my colleagues know that I'm also in favor of those individuals that feel that their rights are being, you know, it's against their rights to have a mask. There is 100% virtual for you or for those individuals that decide that, you know, they don't like the rule. But I think wearing a mask saves lives and respect the rest of the students, the teachers, administrators, and our principals. So I think it's a good thing and I will be in favor of that, of course. And then in addition, there are CTE, there is a CTE program of one of our business partners here in Stafford that sews masks for the little ones because they should be a little tight around the ear. And she uses North Stafford students to help. So that is just a plug I'm putting out there.
Could I just mention about childcare? I sent this to the Board a couple of weeks ago. I am going to give you a proposal. It's not the students, well, it is students, but our staff to try to offset some of the childcare costs. And, you know, again, we have some staff that make very little and we need them to be here. And when you start factoring what it costs to go to childcare versus what you're making here, it may make more sense for some of them to stay home and watch their kids. So I just want you to know that I will be, we got to wait for our survey to come back to see what that number would look like.
Madam Chair, can I follow up on that? I think one of the questions I've had, do we have a count? And you don't have to answer it now as to the number of teachers that we're going to have that confirm that they're, you know, they're going to do face to face versus virtual?
Oh, okay. I don't have that number.
Okay. And then the other thing was, do we have a count on the individual students that have fallen behind that we know that needs to have face to face so that we could?
Yeah, so the answer is that one I know we definitely don't have because we won't know that until they get back. Yeah. I mean, we'll know where they were when they left, but when you're saying fallen behind, my assumption is that they have fallen further behind basically.
Figure that since March, that you could tell based on, you know, the ones that are underserved versus how their grades went.
Well, I mean, I could probably guess with great accuracy, but I'd rather be more objective in that comment.
Sure, sure. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chairwoman Hazard.
So I'm going to go back to the buses because you know how I am. I like things grouped together. So I think what we were hearing is there's a general consensus. However, I would ask, and see how the Board, when we, when whatever you are bringing to us on Tuesday, if we could have sort of, what do we want that to look like? So we have some, this is what is expectations with regard to face coverings on the buses. If I understood, Ms. Hokanov, there have been face shields and different things that I have heard from, as you stated, about the bus drivers, of what is the best face covering apparatus? I'm not even sure what word I would use for them. And if there is something that rises to the top that this is something I would like for you all to bring that, but I would like that to be consulted and I know this is going to sound crazy, but I'm a hands-on kind of person. If there are like different reiterations of what can be worn or whatever, have people come in and try them on, then disinfect them, all that stuff. But I'd love to get the input from those who are going to be, you know, driving those buses and or being on those buses, even our monitors and things and people like that. So, you know, just to look into that. So is that helpful? I think that's helpful for the Board without making the decision, but providing guidance. All right. Secondly, I think I also heard with regard to face coverings within our school buildings, again, I would ask the same sort of follow on, what are the recommendations based on staff? I know your wonderful team has come up with lots of ideas of what that should look like. And I think that would be helpful to the Board, but I think we've given guidance that that is, we are supportive of that. Now it's a, what does it look like? Is that acceptable to the Board in general for?
So you want recommendations about mask usage and the, and the, what's it called? Face shield usage and if there's face coverings.
I'm getting better, too.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
I mean, just, I think that that's helpful. I mean, I do believe tonight we have telegraphed, but there's still always the, well, what does that really, really mean? Because I will have to honestly say, though, when I was at a meeting very recently, within the last 24 hours, and an individual who was giving us information was with a mask or with a face covering, excuse me, I did find them very hard to hear. And I do think that is something we do need to be aware of as well of just how we're going to, you know, just be looking at that. But I think the guidance is there. Final thoughts on what I would call, where is our advocacy role? And I'm going to take chairman's privilege, which I try not to do very often, and give my list, and then I'll let others jump in. They're going to be in sort of a random order because as you all know, I like to doodle and stuff. I was thinking one area of advocacy might be with the governor's office and those that be and highlighting this CDL issue with regard to DMV. That is something that I think we could say, I can't imagine that we are the only school district who is dealing with this, that that, to say, if someone is coming in for a CDL license to drive a bus, a school bus, yes, a school bus, excuse me, yes, that there is some priority or something to that. There may not be that ability, but I figure, why not ask? Because we're going to be moving how many students? Because if we can pick up some drivers that way, I don't know. I'm just trying to talk practical things and I'm sure I would, I'd be willing to talk to the School Board Association if they need to because I can't imagine we're alone. Let's see, wait a minute, I'll have to go through my pieces. I would also like to throw out in the hearing and watching so much our community, we are a great community when we have a project. And I think as we can begin to say, are there those that are interested in making masks? I know that those people exist, oh, face coverings, sorry. I know those exist. I certainly don't want to say, you know, the school district needs to manage that, but there are going to be people who I know, I know my neighbors will say, oh, my gosh, I can make fill in the blank and think how we would want to manage that because we are always a better school system when our community, whether they have children in schools or not, that want to get involved. And I think there's going to be a lot of people who will say, that is something I can do. I will tell you all, I am not going to be the sewer because, well, let's just leave that alone, but I will not be volunteering for that particular task for everybody's safety. So I would put that out. I am, that's right, I know some of you all are sewers, but as you get a contact.
And my Friday letter, I will put that out there also.
Because as you are contacted as school board members, because tonight I will go home and I believe I will have people from my church and various walks of life that I, and say, I'm willing to make that. Take those numbers, let's figure out. But if Colette has, here is what I need those to look like, patterns or, like I said, for the non-sewer, you really don't.
Well, and especially because we're talking little kids to adults. I mean, that's different.
Right. If there can be, and I hate putting anything else on Colette, but if there's any ways we can get out, this is what we would need. I truly believe our community will step up and help us. But I also, the worst is, is when people offer and we don't have a, here's what we would, we would like you to do. So Colette, I'm sorry to put that on you, but I will let Dr. Kizner and you figure out who could get us those patterns. I mean, I'm sure.
I have them.
Awesome.
I've been making masks for our staff since we started this for our food distribution people and our. for our food distribution people and our transportation people. So there's several different patterns and it depends on their comfort level and sewing capabilities. But there are child-sized masks, and some are very easy to do.
I would then suggest perhaps that we work with our communication folks to put a particular tab, and it can say, how can you help? People love those. I mean, there are people, you know, that like, how can you help? And have that be a section. I don't know. I'm sorry, I know I'm in the weeds. But I truly believe we're going to have people who want to help, and I don't want to have them say, well, I never knew what to do. I'm trying to think if I had one more on here somewhere. Excuse me. Actually, I think those are my main ones for right now. But are there other suggestions or advocacy areas? Okay.
Childcare funds, close your ears. I think that the governor needs to look at this, that they're, call it COVID money because right now they're not calling it COVID, that childcare money. I think it's part of COVID because these individuals have to go to work. And we could subsidize our teachers. But I think that subsidizing individuals that are, can make it either, that we could help in that respect.
Yes, Ms. Healy.
And with these new hours, there's going to be longer daycare times.
Correct.
And I, this, I'm very happy to hear about the Y being open for all our families from 6:30 to 6:30. That is the first time I heard about it. So if there was a memo earlier, I must have missed it. But with the longer hours, I need to know what the cost is going to be and if that's something that can be brought to us at the next meeting or, or in a memo. Because I support subsidizing for staff. But again, I want to subsidize it for, for all our families.
Yeah, those that need it, yeah.
The ones that need it are the ones, to a great extent, that can't afford it. And, and just like we have staff that works for low wages, we have a lot of parents that are working for minimum wage.
I will say that I also reached out to the Park and Rec Department, and I need to follow up with them because they're telling me they're not able to. But I'm not, I'm not saying they're wrong. I'm just saying maybe I didn't ask the question right. Because they're able to run camp programs.
Yeah.
Maybe the term is not childcare as camp programs. That is, so there might be other avenues to explore.
Definitely. I talked about them.
Camp works just as well.
But they use a lot of students, traditionally, when they have their summer camps, they use a lot of high school graduates and college students. And, you know, that workforce may not be available, you know, during, during the school year. And, and I think we're all aware that a lot of programs at the county got cut because of the, the current funding.
Yeah.
And I think Parks and Rec was one of them, so.
But at the same time, though, Ms. Healy, they could still use the, this is the reason why I'm thinking that the YMCA has an opportunity here to use the buildings, use the locations to cover the kids versus, you know, they don't have a lot of room in the school system. But if the YMCA has this program, they could use Parks and Recs and combine with the county and YMCA and maybe some COVID money, we could cover that. And I think we need to start thinking outside the box. There's money. If it's not called COVID money, call it COVID money because this is part of the COVID pandemic. That's, that's all I'm saying. I agree with Ms. Healy.
We're on the same wavelength here.
With you.
Ms. Randall.
So one of the things that I've been reading the VSBA articles on different places and looking into different localities and, and again, reading through the emails that we have received and the, the survey that the SCA did as well. And I think, you know, getting information out there, and I know you kind of always have to be on the tender side of things because of it's not firm or like you say, you have to date it because it could change that afternoon. But I think that, you know, things that we've talked about as far as safety and mask wearing and the social distancing, staying at six feet, not going to three feet. I still think there's a lot, for teachers, there just seemed to be a lot of angst. And I don't know if there's going to be some sort of a, I, I know you have all of the professional learning set up for them because there's a lot of them that had concern about, how do I do, you know, this online learning and virtual, you know, in-face learning? And then there are some that are, you know, worried about, what if I do 14 days? What leave am I going to use? You know, how am I going to pay for it all if things aren't covered? There's just a lot of, a flurry of worry. And, yeah, well, and we all are living in that uncertainty truly because we're really face-to-face with nothing is certain. But I just wonder if we're going to, you know, there's, the parents are having just as much angst. And it's funny because some educators, I think, are thinking, oh, it's just for the kids, helping the parents. But some of the same problems that the parents are calling, the teachers are calling a problem, too. It's very parallel a lot. But I know parents could definitely use, like, you know, we're, we're obviously not going to go back to school for back-to-school learning in a traditional way. But even if we could have the administrators in their buildings, you know, say, you know, hey, let me just show you what we've been doing over the summer and how it's going to look when you come in the building. And this is what we have in place for you. And this is what some of our classrooms look like. Just show them some, you know, give them peak briefs of things, you know, via a video, via a Zoom or thing, meeting or something. And even start to offer it out to parents. Hey, parent, you know, just start getting everybody's worries down by just showing them, you know, this big scary plan that's out there that we don't have every I dotted and every T crossed because that just can't happen right now. But just giving them things to get them involved and take down their worries a little bit by showing them in a, not, and don't show them one school, show them their school. You know, if you want to log in, you can see Hampton Oaks or you can see, but just to try to, you know, help teachers and help parents and even kids to see, oh, it's not going to be this scary prison-like experience, you know, that, you know. And I think in some cases, it's going to be nice for kids to see if a teacher has a face shield that two-thirds of their face isn't covered up. So I really don't know if you're happy with me or not, you know. I mean, some will wear masks, too. But if they have, you know, the little ones learning how to enunciate and pronunciate and spell words, it's going to be helpful to see a mouth. But just to kind of roll, I know as we get closer, you can do that. But even further out, I think, you know, you can say, hey, we added one more thing, want to show you today, you know, just so that they can get that anticipation rolling instead of just sitting there gripping. Okay, that's me.
Yeah, so that's great. I just want to say some things that we already started. Starting next week, some of these middle schools are doing sixth-grade orientation, having the kids go through scheduled social distancing, the whole thing. And some are doing virtually. So we are starting that process of having people do exactly what you just described, getting to see their building, their potential classroom, and to alleviate, you know, maybe some of the potential anxiety that they may be experiencing.
Any other ideas, Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to, I'm, I don't know if Patrick Burnett is on the line or whether he could speak to it or you could speak to it. Is just, you know, there are a lot of teachers who are talking about concerns about their health and things like that. And it's my understanding that, that some of this is covered by the, it was protected by the ADA, the, Americans, there we go, Americans with Disabilities Act. And so just to make sure that, that HR is getting that information out to teachers as to who might be protected in some way or able to access disability pay for, for something like that, how that would work. And I don't, I, I'm, nobody who's listening to this should think that I know exactly what the rules are because I do not. But I just want to make sure that, that staff, who are really worried and have health concerns that are, are covered by the CDC or covered by whichever guidelines they are, know about that. And then I had asked about, excuse me, if we could, for teachers who really don't feel comfortable coming back to work, are we able to help them out with insurance for that year? Either covering the, the school portion and they would only have to pay the normal portion or, or anything like that, so.
Do you want me to respond to the first part or is that just a general statement? Okay, I'll just real quickly. So Patrick has been working. He's been, he's been, you know, surveying and getting information. And staff have been contacting him who are unidentified health risk that's listed as the CDC has put together, you know, what, what the health factors. And then he is meeting with them or communicating with them to go over their rights and what accommodations we'll be considering. And, but the other part I, we have not, or at least I have not thought about on the health insurance part. So I'll have a conversation with him.
And Dr. Kizner, if I could quickly jump in. Dr. Chase, a survey was sent out to all staff last week. And that's, the approach we've taken is based on the guidance that the EEOC has offered on how the ADA, how coronavirus impacts the ADA. And so the, the survey was put out to all staff to give them the opportunity to request consideration for alterations to their work arrangements. It won't be a formal accommodation in all instances. But for anyone that's got a medical condition that puts them at greater risk of severe illness, we're doing everything we can to work directly with that person and with their supervisor to see what options are available.
Great. Thank you very much. And, and I just wanted to, Chair, I had, had received an email from somebody who, and I understand people's stress and, and all of that, asking if any of us would be willing to work in a classroom with students given this situation. And I responded that, yes, I would be teaching beginning August 17th, and I would be in a class wearing a mask with other people who are wearing masks. And I just want to say, my, my husband has been working throughout, ever since March, and my son has been working ever since March. And when I go into the grocery store, there's somebody who's been working ever since March. So I, I do understand people's stress and people's worry. But there are many, many people who have been working the entire time that this shutdown has been going on and will continue to work. And so I think, I think we need to think about that as well. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if we got that answered or not. There was a thing, advocacy, right? I'm sorry, advocacy. It was about the teachers that they are only allowed to teach their subject versus substitutes were able to.
So in the one-on-one that I had with Ms. Young, she asked the question, if I, do you want me to break the question? Okay. She asked the question, if we could spread out the elementary kids to other buildings, could we have other teachers teach that are not endorsed in K-5? And the answer is no. I mean, that's, that's the answer from Department of Ed. The teachers, that has not been waived. So if you're a seventh grade, whatever, or, well, I don't know, seventh math teacher, you can't be teaching third grade. You can't be teaching out of your, your licensed area.
Right. So that was the advocacy item that I was going to mention. And then I'm being really rude today. But to piggyback off of Dr. Chase's question and answer, Patrick, I was wondering, there were teachers that were concerned because they're in that risk group. Would they be able to like switch out? And it goes back to the same issue, to teach online versus in a classroom if they could?
Oh, absolutely. That would be, again, it's not automatically yes. But that would be a reasonable accommodation. So why is it not an automatically yes? Okay. I don't see this scenario. But let's say you're a physics teacher that needs to be, get a home. But we don't have any students that need physics, okay? Then, you know, most likely you also have maybe chemistry or biology or something. So absolutely, we're looking for that match. But, you know, we're not opening it up. So if you read the Fairfax Plan, this is very similar. Until we know how many and who, it's how many and who are seeking the 100% remote, then we're being a better position, not only those that are health risks. As, as you mentioned, the health insurance, there might be some people that we absolutely do need you to teach remotely. And, but then we have to match you with your credentials.
Yeah.
Okay, it, it has to be aligned.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
And what happens if, if there's, you're a virtual teacher, but we don't have a match? What do we do with that virtual teacher?
Well, if you're a virtual teacher, but we don't have a match, we'll have a match for the number, the preliminary number of people that are, that are, and I don't want to give out the number because it's not a very large number. I mean, it is large, but it's not all teachers. The numbers that I was going to give you is, remember, it's all categories. I mean, so I don't see so far from what my conversation with Patrick this morning, that we would not have a match based on the number of people that I believe are going to be seeking remote learning. Now, but I do this, well, I don't want to get too technical. Okay, yeah, okay, I'll just leave it at that.
Broad, broad.
It is getting.
Dr. Warner, it's Dr. Warner's turn.
First of all, I just want to thank everybody who's put all the effort into trying to do these plans. And I want to assure the community that Dr. Kizner and the school board takes your concerns very seriously. We are parents, we are grandparents, some of us, most of us are educators. We have been in the schools, we have been, we have taught. We share your concerns, and we are taking this very, very seriously. I think that with so much uncertainty and so many questions about how we're going to do this, we are not letting anything influence us but what the data tells us and what we believe is in the best interest to meet our mission, which is to educate the children of Stafford and to protect and keep the health and safety of our staff and our teachers. So I just want to assure you that we, we are taking your questions very seriously, and we are looking at this very, very closely in trying to make these decisions. And we also recognize that whatever decisions we make are going to have to be adaptable because the situation is going to continue to change, just like it has since February. My one question, which Ms. Young already sort of brought up, is that, so we are going to try to match teachers that are, that for whatever reason only want a virtual option or can't come into the school with students that are also requesting the 100% virtual.
So the survey that Patrick sent out was specific to health issues. And then once we get the numbers on the remote, okay, we're also then going to say, okay, we're going to look at K-12 and for K-5, we're definitely going to look at edgenuity. But that's not, and you already heard about virtual Virginia. But that may not, that will not be the only other thing. We may still say we need, I'll just use foreign language for this purpose, okay? We may need foreign language teachers. We may need a seventh-grade algebra teachers. We may just need others. And then if we are going to be somewhat selective and maybe tap somebody on the shoulder and say, in light that seventh-grade algebra is being reduced by 25% based on the number of kids that are going to seek 100% virtual, we don't necessarily need, I'm making this number, 10 algebra teachers, we only need eight. number, 10 algebra teachers, we only need eight. So then we're going to look at two, and that, maybe they have already an interest, maybe they already have experience in remote learning, and then we'll tap them on the shoulder and ask them to do that assignment. Engineering or face-to-face, you know, they'd be the 100% teacher. So that's part of the matching that we have to do once we get more of the data.
All right, Ms. Healy, did you have your?
Okay, my question has to do with transportation.
Yes, Ms. Healy.
That's generic, right? I'd like to know at the next meeting, or if you, if you have it earlier, you can send us the, the memo, how many parents are, have committed to driving their students to school? Is that, that's one of the questions, did you ask, is it not?
Yeah, I won't have that, it's, now the survey is done on the 7th, or when's our next meeting? 14th.
Okay.
I'll have it soon after the 17th to give you more exact, I could give you a good number on, on the 14th.
Well, you can give it up, up to the 13th or something, but I, I would like to know that, because a lot of the parents I've talked to said that they would be willing to, to drive their students, of course, they, they're willing to drive their students, their students can go to, to school more. But I, I think that's going to be important in looking at this whole bus transportation, how many we're going to be able to transport, how many we have to transport, and, and also how many households have, you know, more than one student that will be riding the bus together? Because my understanding is, and I know there are households that have five elementary school children, is that five going to be part of the 20 on the bus, or will that be five plus, you know, 18 or whatever? It's, in terms of the, the computations, are, are we looking at that? How many are more than one in the household?
Yeah, because kids in the household could sit next to each other. The problem is the kid that sits at the, in the aisle seat, we got to keep a kid three feet away from that student. You know, again, I've, I'm sure there's a couple of families that have four or five kids in the elementary.
Oh, there's more than a couple. At least I know more than a couple.
Okay, but, well, we'll, we'll, we'll see what the numbers show us.
Okay, I'd like to get.
Let's talk data in that respect.
Well, I think, I think this is going to be important, because we're talking about, you know, getting these kids there on time and not being delayed and, and, and other issues that come up. So I'm trying to find out if, if, if we can eliminate a number of bus runs, because there's more in households that can sit together, that can only help the situation. And the third comment is, is something, I, I guess it goes to the board. Right now, we charge high school students a parking fee, and I think it's about $100. You have a parker, is that what it is, Ms. Randall? And the purpose of that fee, when it was implemented, was to help pay for paving the parking lots. And I would suggest that if a, a family is willing to commit, that their student will be driving themselves to school and not need to take the school bus, that we waive for this year that, that parking fee. So it's just something, something to think about.
And, and I just would add to that, though, that we don't have enough parking spots for everybody to drive to school. I mean, just that, that, that.
Right.
Oh, that, there, that's true, thank you.
And, and if there are parents that, if the fee is waived and they don't want it waived, and they want to donate that money for a mask or anything else, we will welcome take that money.
I do have a question, so I'm not familiar with this.
We could waive the fees for all students to facilitate driving.
If you were taking a bus, you wouldn't be paying the $100, right?
No.
Or driving. So if we're not really waiving anything, it's those that drive to school, they pay the hundred, those who don't?
Well, it may encourage more people to drive that perhaps don't want to pay the fee. It, it would be an incentive, and it would be a benefit, and it would be something that I would see as a thank you for driving, and, you know, for this year, we're willing to, to waive that. I always had my questions about needing it to, to pave the parking lot, but, you know, this year I think we need to do everything we can to encourage families to provide transportation to school.
I, I do want to mention something about waiving, so.
That's a personal statement, thank you.
The YMCA, I hope people understand that we don't pay them, they pay us, okay? You know, it's, it's like renting out a facility. I, I didn't realize that. And it's $20,000. I believe it's much better to give them the $20,000 to lower their, to help with scholarships of some sort. Yeah, $20,000, all the sites, it's, it's a one-time thing.
It's the minimus. It is not the value of the, of, of the space that they are renting, because that was, that was a contract that is awarded, it has to be competed, and, you know, that, that's something that, that went through the whole procurement process. So I, I don't, I don't have a problem with considering that, but I, I want to know, you know, what the costs are going to be. If they're going to charge the same amount from 6:30 in the morning to 6:30 at night, fantastic, but if it's going to be more, I need to know what it's going to be and, you know, how much it's going to be, you know, for the families. And right now, it's, it is on a sliding scale, or it was prior to this year, you know, based, based on income. So it's, it's just something I think we need to know and our community needs to know when they're making.
So let me make sure I clarify, or maybe you already understand. Before school starts at 6:30 at every site, after school ends at 6:30 at every site. During the daytime, when the kids are not in, when your kid's not in school, this is staff, they're not going to be at every school. They'll be at like, we don't know, I think about five sites. So for the elementary child who's not a child of a staff member, there will be the morning before, starting at 6:30, and there will be the after, that will end at 6:30 at every site, like they do today, or they have done. But for the staff, we're not, they're not able to staff to have one at every site, but they'll have it spread out, so it won't be a long ride for the parents to drop their kid off.
Right, and there will not be childcare for people whose children are not attending school on that day.
Correct.
To be getting childcare at the school.
Right.
Right, I just, I.
So the staff won't have childcare on the day their schools are?
Staff will.
Staff will, but other people won't? Well, I'd like to see if we can talk about providing it for equal opportunity for childcare.
What, what I would like to know also, if there are subsidies that YMCA gets, because I thought there's some kind of subsidies that they get, I don't know, it's from the, not from the county, but they're, they're, I, I just need to know, I don't know enough about it, but I would like to know that, I don't know if we could find out, but.
Well, there's two things I do also need to mention. One, as we talked about, why Park and Rec can't do it to a level, don't think it's not the same workforce that, because I, I'm a member of the Y, not that I've ever gone, but, so, but I do pay my dues very religiously monthly and haven't gone one time. And secondly, space, Lori goes, she's very good, she goes over every day. And the second thing is, as the question was asked earlier, our buildings, we have space issues. So, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to be pragmatic, you know, I like what, what Ms. Young and others people have alluded to, i- i- this notion if, like churches or other groups are willing to have some childcare, but we're already going to be taking our, you know, they, they have to follow the same restrictions we do for gathering. So we, we have, we're going to use our cafeteria, we're going to use our, and, which means more cleaning, our library, our gymnasium, because you can't have that many kids in the classroom for, for social distancing purposes. Do I?
That, that's a, that's a county, that's a Ralph Center, that's contracted by the county, it's not a Y. Oh, oh.
But the, a lot of other buildings and even some of our faith communities are operating under their own restrictions too. So I think as, again, part of, kind of looping back around, part of, I think, are, the reason too, that I would like to have us pursue, or at least have as part of our plan, a reassessment as other areas open up and things, we may be able to offer more and as we move forward. So I just, I think that being part of the plan is helpful to us and, and may open up. I'm just going to do some final comments, I did think of the other two, sorry. And I think another area of partnership and advocacy we can have with our Board of Supervisors and our community is the hotspot areas, maybe businesses making areas more open for kids to be able to get on to the hotspot areas, and I know there are some people working that in our community, but that's one that, you know, when you say the, how can we help? I really think, let's ask, because, you know, there is a lot of creativity in our community and great ideas. And then the only really specific question, I tried to be really broad tonight, was when the family schedules are created, I know we talk a lot about it being by alphabet, and I don't need an answer tonight, Dr. Strike and others can get back to me, but if the high, I, I always feel like we might be looking at it from elementary up, for some of the high school students who may be in the C T E or other programs, that their schedule kind of dictates going a certain day, that we may have to look at it top-down, does that?
Yeah, so if, again, I.
And I don't want to.
Put so many PowerPoints, I said alphabet when possible, I mean, there are, there are going to be, and the high school is probably the best example, where, you know, and, and again, if the family, especially if it's a high school kid, they might say, you know, if, if, if the program operates on these days better, I want my kid there that day. But I want to make sure for families to know that if you want your family together, your family's going to be together, yeah.
And, and just making sure we let that avenue of connection, of making that and identifying that with their principal or whatever. Board members, I think we've, oh, yeah.
One thing, and then, and then I really should not, because I don't ask any questions on this comment, I'm just making a comment. With the schedule thing, I want you to realize with the high school, even though it says starting 11, some of the, because of the kids that move on these programs, it's actually in some cases starting, kids are being transported like 10 o'clock, 10:15, it's actually before 11 because of our regional C T E and the I B type program, so I just want to let you know that. Okay, that's all I'm saying.
So, well, I would like to just thank everybody for their hard work. I know we are seeing a lot of each other this summer, but this is unprecedented, but I do appreciate the comments that we're receiving, and I appreciate you all being here tonight, and I'll see you again on Tuesday. So with that, our work session is adjourned, thanks so much.
Good night, everyone.